Two meetings in December shifted to the first and third Tuesday of the month. So that December sixth and December twentieth, uh, so we don't have to be here on Christmas.
Okay. There's one other thing, um, County Council, um, we did have an individual come in the county yesterday doing some filming. I guess it was San Francisco Transparency, who's at the group. He was also at other locations in the county, but, um, RCA always sent, uh, a, uh, email out to the managers of departments. And what the individual did was legitimate and, um, correct, except he was here after hours. And, uh, at that point, uh, we could make him exit the building as we could with anyone else, so. Okay, on our regular agenda, item four A, presentation by Mitch Barker with PARs regarding the benefits of the county establishing a 115 trust to stabilize the county pension obligations.
Mr. Barker, good morning. Might want to pull that mic over just a little bit. Thank you.
Morning.
A better?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, very good. Um, my name is Mitch Barker, Executive Vice President with PARs. Uh, been with PARs for eighteen years, uh, since two thousand and four, so a long time. Uh, little background, uh, grew up in, uh, South Texas, uh, along the Gulf Coast, approximately forty miles from the King Ranch. So, um, kind of got my taste of rural life way back in the day. Um, graduated from, uh, Texas A&amp;M and eventually moved to, uh, Orange County in nineteen eighty-five where I raised my family. And, uh, made probably my best move a year ago, moving to Amador County, uh, now resident in, uh, Fiddletown. Um, what I didn't realize, moving in August fifteenth, is that we would evacuate on August eighteenth due to the CalDor fire. So that was a, uh, a rude awakening for sure, but, um, uh, what a tremendous community to be a part of, uh, all the support and, uh, resources, uh, and just friendly people. So glad to be here. Uh, my goal today is to give you a, uh, ten-minute educational presentation, uh, on a 115 trust. Um, three goals, uh, to inform, to keep it simple, and to answer questions. Um, I think the presentation, uh, there we go, it's, uh, up. So on page three, I wanted to share with you, uh, what three companies work together to bring you this program. Uh, PARs were known as trust administrators. We do record-keeping, accounting, plan compliance as it relates to the IRS. GASB, who sets the accounting standards, and also the IRS, uh, who blesses our trust. And finally, the state government code who gives us our investment parameters. Uh, US Bank is our trustee. They are the custodian of the assets and provide oversight protection. And then Highmark Capital, uh, is our investment management partner. They invest the assets at a risk tolerance level that the county, uh, deems appropriate. Next.
You want questions now or you want to wait till the end, Mitch?
Uh, anytime. I like them right away because it makes it easier for everybody, I think.
How conservative are they on their investment strategy?
Uh, we've got five risk tolerance levels, um, conservative, which is about fifteen percent in stocks. And we go all the way up to capital appreciation, which is about seventy-five percent stocks. Um, you're in our OPEB-only trust, which is this, uh, previous slide. If I can go back one. Yeah, approximately six hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars in that trust to pre-fund one of the two retiree, uh, benefits. In this case, it's retiree medical. The strategy for that one, uh, chairman is moderately conservative. It's the second one from the bottom. So it's about thirty percent stock, seventy percent bonds.
That's where most municipalities lie, somewhere in that conservative to moderately conservative?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Um, it really, uh, you, you look at it in terms of how long of a, uh, strategy and opportunity is this? Folks look more longer term on OPEB, which is retiree medical. Um, the shorter they can, uh, look in terms of, um, how far they're thinking about funding would be get more conservative. So that's why we have five levels. So you have that choice.
They don't have one tied to CalPERS strategies, right?
We have one similar to theirs. That would be the one at the very top.
Okay.
Uh, most agencies are not in that one. Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, so again, this is, uh, you're in the trust on the left. It's an OPEB-only trust. Um, little background, you've got two post-employment benefits. One called OPEB. That's a GASB term, which simply means retiree medical. The second one is pension. Uh, we all know about pension and you're with CalPERS. So the idea that we're presenting today is to consider moving from the OPEB-only trust, which you adopted in two thousand and ten, and move you over to this combination trust, which has both the OPEB bucket and the ability to set money aside for pension. Uh, about two hundred and eighty agencies have done that, including twenty-five counties, as you'll see. So we'd love for you to consider that. Bottom right is probably the most important paragraph on that page, which is there's no cost to do this. There's no requirement to pre-fund pension, and there's no minimum cost, uh, annual fees. It's very user-friendly and the idea is to make it, um, an attractive idea so that the county would consider that. Before we go to pension, let's talk about OPEB, which you have pre-funded. Be on the next page. So that column on the right, you've got about six point million in, um, liabilities. You've set aside about seven hundred and seventy thousand. So your unfunded liabilities is five point four million. So it's a funded ratio of about twelve percent. And your annual benefit cost, bottom right there is two hundred and, about two hundred thousand dollars. So that's pre-funding. Pre-funding is setting money aside for a future obligation. Uh, very important thing to do and very valuable to do. Let's talk about pension now. Transfer one more page. There we go. Um, three things have happened in the, in the roast, uh, last five to seven years that have been very important on the pension front. Number one, GASB, sixty-eight came out, which said that pension liabilities could no longer be buried in the footnotes. They had to be a line item on the balance sheet. So they became much more front and center for every agency, especially counties, because they tend to be bigger agencies. Looking on the right side of the page, two other important events took place by CalPERS. They lowered the discount rate. Uh, I'm a simple person. I think simple. I, uh, like to inform simply. Discount rate is simply expected rate of return. They are lowering their expected rate of return. It used to be seven-five, and then a year ago, they lowered it to six point eight from seven. So the point is they're lowering the discount rate. And unfortunately, what happens when they lower it is it increases the unfunded liability and increases your annual cost. What else did they do? They shortened the amortization period. Uh, they went from thirty to twenty years. So just like if your mortgage company shortened the term in which you pay your mortgage annually, uh, it would increase your cost. And they did that. So those are things that CalPERS have done to, one, get real with the capital markets, but two, to help lower unfunded liabilities over time. Next page. All right, these are your CalPERS numbers, right off the CalPERS website, if you were to look them up. That middle column, evaluation, is as of June thirty, twenty twenty-one. These came out in August, twenty twenty-two, which means they run one year behind. There's four thousand agencies in CalPERS. It takes a long time to value them. And these are your current numbers as of, uh, August. So about two hundred and eighty-two million in actuarial liability, two hundred and twenty million in assets. Look what happened on line two. Went from a hundred and eighty-one the previous year to two hundred and twenty. Twenty-one percent return. That was the tremendous year they had two years ago. So it really improved your assets on line two, and therefore it improved your unfunded liability on line three. You went from eighty-five million to sixty-two million. And then on line four, which is kind of how everybody judges things, your funded ratio, it went from sixty-seven point nine to seventy-seven point ninety. Ten percentage point improvement. That's tremendous, and that's what everybody had hoped for. Unfortunately, last year, as you may know, when the fiscal year ended, um, the initial report was down six point one percent. Uh, but they didn't have all their assets valued in yet, primarily real assets such as, um, private equity and real estate. They've now valued those in, and they recently came out with the returns, and they're negative seven point three. So next year, when the returns get valued into your statement, unfortunately, uh, the liabilities would go back up and your funded ratio would go back down. So what's real for every year? It's this employer-
Well, that wipe out all of the gains that we made, or will it, um?
Yes, sir. The prediction is that that, uh, seven percent loss will be about a ten percentage point lowering of your funding. You kind of go right back to where you were.
Okay.
That's what the actuaries are saying. Uh, even with the liabilities going down in this particular, look what happened from the employer contribution amount. It went from ten point four to eleven point three, even when CalPERS earned twenty-one percent. So what does that say? It means your costs are still going up each and every year. We want to give you a tool to deal with that. Next page. So we've got about fifteen reasons why we think it makes sense to set money aside for pension at some point in time. These are our best four in the, uh, for sake of time. Is a local control over the assets, meaning that you decide how much you put in, when you put it in, how much you take out, and also what's the risk tolerance level. You can be as conservative as you want, or you can go up the risk tolerance scale. What is your choice for the additional money that you might put in the trust? The choice is to send extra money to CalPERS. There's a term for that called ADP, additional discretionary payments. That's a good idea. I just don't think it's the best idea in today's environment. Because if you sent them extra money, but you had an emergency or a tough budget year in the county, and you say, "CalPERS, I'd like to get my money back because we got to fill a hole here," can't do it. Once you've given them extra money, it stays. If you put the money in the trust and you had a budget emergency or a tough fiscal year, you can get the money back, and that's the key. Think of it as a savings account that has the chance to earn a greater rate of return than your treasury.
Would we actually get a disbursement of the funds, or would we, uh, borrow against it?
No, you'd take, you'd take money out-
Okay.
-of the trust.
No penalty?
No, sir.
Okay.
Uh, number two, pension rate stabilization. Well, you saw what the CalPERS returns were for the last two years, down seven point three, up twenty-one. The two previous years, it was, um, up four point seven, and previously to that, up six point seven. Both of those under the target rate of return of seven. So how do we stabilize this? Put money in a trust, earn more than the treasury, and use it when needed to fill a gap. The rainy day fund, um, again, if you said today, "We needed money out of your trust," the money would be available by Friday. So it's very liquid. And then diversification is key. Uh, we're operating under a different set of investment guidelines than the treasury. Their hands are tied. They have to keep the money safe. Um, that money doesn't earn a lot. It's typically under one percent. So we can earn a greater rate of return, but again, the county chooses what the risk tolerance level is. And we think if you have extra money, why send that to CalPERS? Put it in a trust, and therefore you're spreading the risk. The old saying is, "Don't put all your eggs in one basket."
So do we disperse from this fund toward our pension obligations annually, or?
You could, but only if you needed to. Typically, you want to pay out of the treasury to CalPERS. Yeah. But on the previous page, for instance, uh, your, um-
So when, when would it be used to offset our unfunded CalPERS liability?
Well, that's the county's call. Uh, you can, for instance, your, go back one page. Yeah. So on, uh, line two from the bottom there, your contribution amount this year is eleven point three. Let's say the budget only had ten point three, and you needed another million to make up the difference because of a tough budget year.
Okay.
You could go to the trust to make up that difference. Yeah.
So it's really just to kind of close the gaps when we're paying off our unfunded liabilities?
Yes.
Okay.
And let's say over time, supervisor, you accumulated quite a bit of money, and you go, "You know what? The savings account's too big now. It's time to pay extra money to CalPERS to lower the unfunded liabilities. You can do that." So lots of options. Next page. Wanted to share with you, uh, twenty-six counties that have adopted this very program, uh, to, um, set money aside for pension. So we have twenty-six so far, uh, quite a few not far here from here. Next page. Chairman, you're asking about, um, investments. Uh, it's a simple approach. It's certainly not simple to try and figure out what the market's doing. But, um, our portfolio manager would, uh, would come visit locally, get all the input that, uh, the group would provide them in terms of, when might you use the money? What's your risk tolerance threshold? What's your target rate of return? There's five strategies in the middle there. You see what they've earned over a ten-year period, uh, from conservative at the bottom to capital appreciation at the top. Your OPEB money is in the moderately conservative. So it's earned three point five one, and that's including this last year, which was one of the most difficult years on record. Versus if you had the money in LEAF that earned point nine, so it's about four times differential you see. And really why these trusts make good sense is that bottom right, you've got a dedicated portfolio manager that's listening, taking care of your needs, and managing the money according to a risk level that you prefer. Um, you'll also have their cell phone number. You already do because you're already a client. But if the market were to go down like it has done a thousand points in a day, we had some clients call up and say, "What do we do? Do we buy? Do we sell? Do we stand pat?" Well, you can argue it all three ways, but ultimately, he'll make a recommendation, and then the county, um, agrees on that or not.
You know, one thing I would say right now, um, if you look at the market, it's real high. Um, price to earnings are kind of silly at times. So if we did it, I wouldn't be looking to go into your, your, I guess you'd call it your capital appreciation, because I think the risk is real great. That's one of my thoughts.
Yeah, I would agree, supervisor.
Um, Mitch, um, the returns here, is this before fees or after fees, or?
These are, uh, gross of fund-level fees, sorry, uh, um, net of fund-level fees, like mutual fund fees.
Right.
Uh, they are gross of management fees.
Okay.
Which is the next page.
All right. But it's still as a reference, LEAF, um, it's ahead of the-
Correct.
Remind me, LEAF?
Um, local agency investment fund. So it's the largest, uh, pot of money that most agencies put their, um, general fund or treasury money with. Again, they're restricted. They cannot diversify investments, so they cannot invest in equities like we can.
I think part of that came around, wasn't it me from Orange County, that debacle they ran into down there?
Correct. Nineteen ninety-four, I was there. Uh, one of my good friends was, uh, on the county council team that had to take them into bankruptcy. It's a pretty tough time. Uh, treasurer did go off into the weeds with some investments, derivatives, and, uh, ultimately it, um, it got greedy. Exactly. And unfortunately, a lot of other agencies had put their money with the county's money too, so. Uh, fee-wise, real important in the middle there, plan setup fee, none. So again, there's no cost to transfer you over to this combination trust, move your money over in the OPEB bucket, and open up your pension account. So we want to take this step administratively and simply get you prepared if you think it's a good idea. Once you start putting assets in, these are the fees, uh, point two-five percent on a sliding scale that goes down. And then the investment management fee below is point three-five percent, and again, also goes down as the assets build.
So my last slide, Mitch, quick question. The, uh, if we were to, to change over from the, uh, OPEB account to the, it's me over here.
Oh.
Yeah. The, um, uh, if we were to, to change over to this, uh, account, would, would the OPEB funds and the pension funds be intermingled, or would they be kept separate?
They would be kept separate for GASB rules.
Okay.
But for fee purposes, they aggregate together. So the seven hundred and fifty thousand roughly that you have in OPEB would combine with any pension money so that you would reach a, uh, one of these other tiers faster. Yeah. Good question. The last slide, uh, really answers the question, why take this step? First is to smooth out pension rate volatility, because you can see, after we went over the numbers, it certainly is volatile. Number two, offers a hedge against inflation. We've all seen those numbers. It's one of the reasons the stock market is doing what it's doing, and the feds are doing what they're doing. Uh, you need a hedge against that inflation. Number three, every agency needs a toolbox and lots of tools in that toolbox to help them deal with, uh, financial issues. And we think this is a good fiscal tool. So really, our goal, in our opinion, is to prepare today for tomorrow's pension realities, which is the liabilities continue to go up and the costs continue to go up. So this tool can help you deal with that. That's my presentation. More questions?
So if we park more funds into this new account, what would we be looking at, um, to get started and then annually? Or is that something you have a, a handle on, Chuck?
There's no obligation to continue, uh, contributing annually. It would be as we had, um, funds available. Um, you know, I've, I've talked to Mitch about that. That's always the challenge. It's easy to set up the, the fund. It's just hard to fund the funds.
Okay.
And, uh, that, that's our challenge. So in the, in the past, we've had, uh, a couple of slugs of one-time money that we've put in. Uh, that's where that, that seven hundred grand has come from. Um, and that's where we are. We've been looking at, at, uh, these in, in conjunction with, with POBs. We were talking about pension obligation bonds for a while. And, uh, you can use the, the POB along with a 115 to kind of, to, um, uh, to mitigate the ups and downs. Um, but with the rates shooting out of sight like they have, POBs are not going to be, uh, viable until, um, we, until those rates come back down. So, uh, uh, right now, the, the one, this would just be a 115 standing by itself. And I would say, um, right now, there's no, we don't have a commitment to fund it.
Okay. So we would set up the account, and then it would be there, and then we could put money in as, you know, when we have it?
Plumas County would be a good example. It took them two years before they funded the pension side. So, but, uh, once their one-time money showed up, they were glad to have it because they wanted to put it over at that time. Um, San Bonito County did something different. Uh, they sold a landfill, and that became their one-time money to get started. And now they've established a funding policy, uh, to help eke out funds each year. One is a percentage of surplus, if there is surplus, as not always. Um, but we have a senior municipal finance consultant, and his job is to help agencies establish funding policies. So we'd love to work with you on that if y'all were to move forward.
Hey, we can sell our landfill.
It won't be a landfill.
Probably.
We'd have to pay somebody to take it, to close landfill.
Probably, in a nutshell, really what you're looking at is, in a LEAF, you have treasuries and, you know, securities, um, don't pay much. Whereas, um, we were talking about, um, when you say conservative, moderate, conservative, moderate, how much you want to put in the stocks, basically? You say, that's probably about correct.
Yeah, so moderately conservative is about, uh, thirty percent stock, seventy percent bonds.
Yeah.
Yeah. So you got your toe in the equity water, but, uh, but not too far.
You said seventy percent?
Uh, yeah, thirty percent.
Twenty to forty?
Stocks.
Okay.
Seventy percent bonds.
Okay.
Be in the balance. Yeah.
You also have alternative types of investments, you know, derivatives and things like that?
Uh, or is it just? Not that kind.
Not that kind.
One of the things that the portfolio manager does is to-
Private equity.
He writes an investment policy, calls it an investment guideline document. Uh, one of the sections in there really was born out of the Orange County debacle. It is what the prohibited asset classes are, and there's four primary ones. Derivatives, not surprisingly, from Orange County, uh, two precious metals, three raw land, and four commodities. All very, um, speculative and, uh, volatile. So none of those can be put into policy for that very reason.
Okay.
Other questions?
I've got one. Do we have to have a minimum in our LEAF fund?
Uh, I'm not sure. I don't think so.
You don't think so?
I think we can, we can put, uh, we, we, uh, the treasurer takes money in and out of, uh, LEAF fund. That's the one big advantage of LEAF is that it's very liquid, uh, and, uh, can, can go, money can come in and out of that pretty regularly, pretty, uh, and, um, but you pay for that with the interest rate.
Does High, does Highmark Capital, do they buy stocks also, um, themselves? Do they own stock, or they just manage, manage money and buy stock with that?
Correct. They have no proprietary funds. So all funds that they would be investing in are other people's funds. And we have two platforms, uh, supervisor, we have a, uh, active platform, which means using buying mutual funds that have the chance to outperform a benchmark, say like the S and P five hundred index. Or we have the passive or index platform, where you're investing in only index funds, which have a lower fee. But by definition, they cannot outperform. We basically have it both ways. We're agnostic. We want each agency to decide what's best for them. That answer your question?
Yeah, because sometimes you find outfits, you know, they're, they're selling stock that they, they own.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Ask for any public comment. Tacey, do you have any, any comments on this? No?
Um, I think if it gives us an advantage in our investing, why not?
It does. It, it will, uh, offer a freedom, uh, in the event that we do, um, need to do other things. So it, uh, there, there's no disadvantage to it either. So if you want to direct us to open up the fund, uh, to make that change, uh, I would-
But there's no cost at this time, and there's no annual fees, even if we don't have any funding in it?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, the OPEB money would move over into this 115.
Right, but it, um, it's still going to be two funds in this fund, isn't it? Yeah.
Identified separately.
So we won't have anything in the pension part of it, uh, to start, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm looking for, any further questions? Board direction to authorize staff to, um, go ahead and approve this change?
Yeah, we're, um, at what point would you be, maybe making a decision what fund you'd want to go into as far as the risk category?
We're in the moderate conservative right now. I would expect that's where we'll stay.
That's for OPEB. Uh, again, after adoption, we send paperwork, and then we have an investment meeting. And we talk about, uh, the goals of the pension, um, the risk tolerance appetite. And, uh, and then the portfolio manager makes a recommendation, but ultimately, it's the county's decision as to what risk tolerance level.
Because right now, I'd like to stay more conservative because it's just, I think that thing's going to, going to pop at some point. Not only, I don't want it being in that bloodbath.
Will we receive some kind of description detailed of what the returns have been for all these various investment strategies?
Yes, sir. That was, uh, one of the slides, um, that was on slide number eleven.
Yeah, but like what's in it and, you know, that kind of stuff, a little more detailed than-
We'll get into as much detail as you want. I tried to keep it high level today, but-
Yeah, yeah, no.
Our annual review that we go over with, uh, Chuck and Tacey, uh, we get into lots of details. What the holdings are, how the holdings have done versus their benchmark. So it's pretty detailed, and it's the returns over one, three, five, and ten years.
Okay.
Yeah, I was going to say that, that Tacey and I meet with Mitch every, and staff every year or so. And then I think after we meet, we say, "We're going to go to the board." And then there's always some dip in the market, and we say, "Well, you know, let's, let's things stabilize before we start talking about it again." So maybe we shouldn't meet anymore. Maybe that's the problem.
It is a, it is a ten, ten-year timeframe, so if you base it on just what's happening today, that's, you might miss out. But, um, I agree with Supervisor Neto, things are, um, a little strange right now, so.
Yeah. I mean, when's the last time that stocks and bonds were down at the same time, this much in the same year? It hasn't happened in, uh, I think forty years.
Yeah.
Uh, I'll never forget trying to buy a house in, uh, San Antonio, and interest rates were fifteen percent. Didn't qualify. So it was a very tough period of time. It's an unusual, uh, but hopefully the Fed's actions are going to, going to help, and then, uh, geopolitical events will, will stabilize, and then we'll eventually, um, get to a better place. But, uh, who knows how long that's going to take.
I think the moderate conservative approach is a, is a good one, and, uh, we're stewards of the public's money. It's not our money, and, um, I think we need to be fairly conservative in, in that approach.
Totally. I agree.
Okay with that direction?
Yep.
Supervisors?
Yep.
Hey, Chuck?
I think for the time being, yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mitch.
Thank you.
All right, so go to item four B, twenty twenty-two California State Association of Counties Conference. That's just happened last week, and, um, I cleared it with, uh- And I cleared it with Supervisor Brown before I put it on the agenda so that he would know we're being asked to give reports on what happened there. So, you want to go first?
Sure. Um, one of the meetings that I attended to was talking about the CSAC grant initiative. And it's, it's really to help a lot of the counties that can't handle dealing with grants. Because federal grants and state grants are sometimes impossible to deal with. And they also target a lot of specific items that rural county can't even handle to deal with as far as everything else. But one of the aspects that they're trying to work with is really specifically try to help all the counties and with grants and getting that information out to each and every one of the, of counties. I just received last Friday an email and one of the grant initiatives is Healthy Homes in one of the organization, Five Star Urban Waters Restoration, Water Conservation, Affordable Connectivity Outreach Grant. So these are all grants that are out there and they would be willing to help facilitate and assign, you know, get, get more of these grants into the, of the counties in California. So that was one of the meetings that I attended. Second meeting was Government Finance Administration Policy Committee Meeting. One of the big items there was the changing of California libraries. Not just handing out books anymore, you know, dealing with, because this is a collection of people that sometimes need help others, other sides. And part of the demonstration was trying to ensure that, you know, healthy care for mental, mobile, a career center and some, some other items that the libraries are now trying to work into. Third item they talked about is the Brown Act. That has been changed by AB two four four nine, Assemblyman Rubio. And it's allowing the hybrid that we have. But we as a board supervisors have to elect it after February, I think is when the, our emergency action kicks off. But it's a, it's a little bit more restrictive. One of the things that I asked, you know, both Supervisor Axe and myself were out of commission for a little bit. And mine was a vacation at first and, but I wouldn't be able to attend a Zoom meeting off of vacation. The only way that the, one of us would be able to attend a Zoom meeting would be as if we were hurt or incapable of attending because of an emergency, you know, a snowstorm or something like that. Or we could not attend. But we have to elect to go on to this in the future as a board.
At a one-time election because now you have to do it.
Yeah, it's, it's a one-time election of, of, for the AB two four four nine. And this is something county council will probably need to dig in a little bit more because I just, I did the high level portion of it. And it goes along with AB two six four seven, local government open meetings. And of course, we have to have a, a specific place for the public to attend also.
We're kind of moving back to the old rules on?
Yeah, I mean, old rules, but with a little bit of new stuff. You know, like Orange County did not want to have any Zoom meetings because they can get inundated very easily because of the amount of people.
Well, they can do their own thing.
Well, and that's, but that's, that's part of the whole problem with everything. A lot of these laws are built generally. You know, they're not set up for rules. They're not set up for urban. They're not set up, you know.
I understand that. I mean, there, there should be a more flexibility. What about the ability for people to present remotely? Because I think that's a real value is like we have a lot of people that comment on a particular agenda item without being present. And that's very convenient.
Focus of this was the us as supervisors, you know, the recipe, you can still hybrid.
Okay.
Still Zoom and that type of.
All right.
The other thing is, sorry?
Council, did you have any comments?
Supervisor Brown already said what I was going to say, which is that the, the bill only addresses whether or not you can participate remotely as supervisors, not whether the public can. The public, if the board wants to continue allowing Zoom, can do that at its discretion. Or like you said, presenters or consultants or whoever.
The other item was the open meetings, orderly conduct. One of the definitions they said is somebody came into our meeting and, and gave a Heil Hitler salute. Does not show disruption. But if somebody comes up to the podium and, and, you know, stops the meeting, that would be disruption. And that's where we could reconvene the meeting without, with that, that person and have him removed. So that is now on SB eleven hundred. And last was the Public Records Act. They're still working, Cal, um, CSAC is still working on this, but the state still will not set up reimbursement fees for any public records requests. So we're still, as a county, still required to foot that bill.
Isn't there a basic charge now Greg per, per page that people have to pay that's just pretty standard?
Well, the, the county charges, generally charges ten cents a page, which is probably outdated in terms of the cost to, for the copy and the making.
Well, we can't recover that staff cost.
There's, no. There is a, there are some counties that have attempted the, sort of a workaround, which me, I, I, I don't want to put ourselves out there. Where they do try to, I think it's Mendocino County, maybe. Generally speaking, you're not supposed to charge for the search or collecting, only the copying. And, and now that most records are electronic or stored electronic, there's no copying anyway if they want electronic records.
Supervisor Brown, they are trying to make some other changes.
Right, but it's, you know, if, you know, for like police reports, anything that, you know, for a public record, you know, where they're really trying to, you know, it might be quite a bit of it. Which the state is now, you know, mandating we do, that we, you know, open up so much more that, that are not funding that. It's unfunded mandate again. And that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Most of these committee policy reports can be accessed on the CSAC website at counties.org if you want to, to find them. So that's a good thing. I think that we're total about fifty-four new supervisors that are going into office this year, which is a lot in the state. So there's a, the learning curve for them is high. I can tell you a lot of the newer supervisors are a little more aggressive on either one side or the other side. So it's interesting to watch that dichotomy in CSAC now. But committee policy meetings, I went to first was Ag and Environment and Natural Resources Committee Meeting with John Joya when he was president of CSAC about two thousand fourteen. Added, used to be Ag and Natural Resources. He added Ag, Environment, and Natural Resources. Good change, but as you can imagine, climate changes is dominating most of the discussion. This platform, Policy Committee Meeting was mostly about water, managing drought through partnerships with counties and then groundwater management. So you had a lot of people from the state there, Water Foundation, San Joaquin Valley Water Collaborative Action Program. Tim, Tim Quinn was there. He used to be the executive director of the Metropolitan Water Agency. He's been around for about thirty years in the water industry. And the interesting thing about this whole discussion on managing drought and groundwater management is nobody wanted to say anything about storage. And some supervisors got up and unhappy about that at the end. And what Tim Quinn justified not bringing up the storage aspect is that we get, most of the rain we get now is in spurts. Heavy amounts of rain in a short period of time. But even in that amount of time, like Lake Amador with Jack's Valley Irrigation District, they can go to six feet, from six feet to twelve feet very quickly with those little spurts. But if you don't have any mechanism for storage, some of the supervisors thought, while it may be unrealistic to build a lot of new dams when things like the Sykes Reservoir up in Belusa County is, I think it's on thirty years now and still not being built. You can raise some of these dams. Lake Amador has talked about a rubber dam. Salt Springs, you could raise it effectively in that way and throughout the state, that's another way to possibly raise them. So that you can capture those large spurts of water when they do come. Or if we do have a good rain year, we could capture a lot more water.
I thought that they were supposed to divert this rainwater and then capture it in the, in the aquifers.
And, and that's a big part of the discussion. That's another way to do it. And I'm talking about, a lot of supervisors thought there should be an average, a way to look at capturing the most amount of water possible. Realizing that it's probably unrealistic to build a lot of new dams now just because of the cost. But, but raising those dams is a more cost effective.
Yeah, we need to capture it somehow, whether we put it in the ground or, and recharge, you know.
Right. And they did say about the Central Valley, that it is dropping, has dropped two or three feet over the course of time. It's basically collapsing because of the amount of water being taken out. But that's why these groundwater management authorities have been formed to try and resolve some of those issues or at least help with them. So that was the main discussion on that committee. The Health and Human Services Policy Committee, which is one I usually don't attend, but Supervisor Brown and I split up the meetings we go to. The biggest discussion here, let's see. First, we have the Prop ten Director, Abbo McDesian, First Five Association of California. That's the first time I met him. He comes out of the Santa Clara area where he managed a First Five there, but a pretty dynamic individual. Talked about the priorities for First Five this year. Infant and early childhood, mental health, resilient families, comprehensive health and development, and quality early learning. The problem is going to be how do we take care of all those issues in the future? There's declining Prop ten tobacco tax revenue. Since two thousand thirteen, the revenue is down fifteen to twenty percent. So that's going to be an issue for the state, especially now they're not going to be able to backfill with the, it looks like we're going to have a deficit with the state. Big discussion on this committee was the CARE Act, the planning and implementation. Really had a diverse committee here. We had Stephanie Welch, who was the Deputy Secretary of Behavioral Health for California Health and Human Services Agency. We had two county executives from Riverside and actually three, Riverside, Stanislaus, and Glen County. And then Dr. Matthew Chang, Chang with the Director of Riverside University Health System. I give you their names just to give you some context when I go into what they said. Ms. Welch with the State Health and Human Services said they will convene a working group. It'll be late January twenty twenty-three, which that'll convene. Right now, they have how many counties? Let's see, they have formed the first cohort of Glen, Orange, Riverside, San Diego, San Francisco, Stanislaus, and Tuolumne. And they're required to implement the CARE Act by October first of twenty twenty-three. And the hope was they're going to find the pros and cons of going different directions. And basically what this is for is to take care of those individuals that have issues with schizophrenia more than anything else. And a lot of those individuals, mental health, you don't want them walking the streets without significant services to be offered to them. This was brought about by SB thirteen thirty-eight. And this was, as I'm told by staff, was the priority for the governor that he put some teeth in this. So that's where the sanctions part come from, that if counties don't perform, the courts can off, can put sanctions to get the counties. Staff has also told me that while the governor wanted some teeth in it, they don't really want to go after counties. So we'll see how that plays out. Interestingly enough, on the homelessness issue, they said the governor wants to put teeth into that. So you can expect to hear more about possible sanctions if the counties don't perform how the state wants and to in the future with homelessness. So the CARE Act, and I'll just read this straight out, specifies a two-tiered phased-in approach. And the first cohort of those seven counties are the guinea pigs. They'll try and make this work. And CEOs were positive, but, you know, they're a little skeptical too. Because you don't want to try to make this work and then have things pop up that are unanticipated and you get sanctions because of that. So I think the state realizes that too, from the documentation I read through, that not everything's known just how this is going to work right now. The CEO of Stanislaus County thought it was important to ID the costs when those tier-one counties, the first cohort, implement the programs. Scott Demoss, CEO from Glen, they're about twenty-nine thousand population. And his main concern was staffing, that this is going to take a lot of staffing to implement this program. The CEO of Riverside, his advice was to set up a working group now for every county, even if you're in the second cohort. Set up a working group of law enforcement, DA, emergency medical services, cities, counties, behavioral health, and, and other vital people that should be on that, and agencies that should be on that committee. The court's chief of operations, their goal is to ID the population types right now so that they can make this work efficiently. So as I said, the CARE Act is primarily serving individuals with schizophrenia. And watching those cohort one, seven counties and try to see what they learn from their experience, not make the same mistakes. And the concern from some of the CEOs is that the courts are not fully collaborating with the counties. And the concern there is because the courts are going to be responsible for sanctioning counties. So they feel there's somewhat of a problem there if you're trying to sit down at the table, but you're also the one that's going to punish too.
Any idea how that's going to work? I mean, you keep saying counties, but you know, there are other jurisdictions in, inside of our county that are cities. And how, do, do we understand how that's going to work?
That's why they have the first cohort, the seven counties. They're trying to figure out what the hurdles are, the best directions to go.
Okay. So just keep, stay tuned for, for the rules.
I think we better take the Riverside County's CEO's advice and form the committee right now. He said get ahead of it and start talking about it.
Well, we have, the board took action at the last meeting to hire our housing, our, excuse me, our housing coordinator. So that's, once we get that position filled, then I think we'll, we will, I'll come back with, to you, with a request. Unless you want to just keep it at staff level. Staff level is probably adequate unless you want a supervisor on there. But we can, we can coordinate some sort of a committee there to make sure the communication is flowing. Now, the CIOs, we meet via Zoom every two weeks. So I'm sure we will be getting lots of feedback on how this is going as, as they start to implement it.
This is going to be honest, very quickly, they've already allocated the money to counties. And this was, it's already stated out there how much money counties are going to get. But the, I note here, the amount is fifty-seven million. So AB one seventy-nine budgeted that amount, allocated to counties. The first cohort, those seven counties, will get twenty-six million. All of the counties will get thirty-one million. And our share has been, CSAC had that at the October board meeting, the allocation. And our share has been, CSAC had that at the October board meeting, the allocation that was put out to counties. I just think we better be ready, because this thing's going to come on us before we know it, and we need to be ready to comply with this, to avoid the sanctions and to do what we're supposed to. The one part is avoiding the sanctions, the other part is to take care of those individuals out there that need mental health treatment. I don't know how many individuals we have in this county with schizophrenia, I don't think we have a lot, but we're, we probably are not down to zero. Like many counties, when it came to, when it came to other issues, we're dwarfed by the big counties percentage-wise. But if we have individuals, we have to do our part, so I don't think we better wait on this, I think we better be ready and prepared. Anyway, I'm going to keep going with my report. All of these committees, these platform committees or policy committees have their platforms also, which were discussed in length, platform changes. The Housing, Land Use and Transportation Policy Committee, a lot of good discussions on this committee. First, one of them was on the California road charge that's taking place. This is going to be a long process, as the presenter said, this is probably going to be at least a ten-year process in changing from pay, your gas tax over to actual pay per miles driven. So it's going to be a very long process, there's probably going to be some kinks in it, but their issues with the gas tax are the fuel efficiency gains, the increases in zero emission vehicles, inflation and loss of purchasing power, and uneven fuel tax burden. What is the road charge? I think you pretty much know that, it's a replacement for the gas tax, one per mile rate for all passenger vehicles, it's revenue neutral, not a tax increase, is what she was very adamant on, and no change in how funding is spent, existing formulas and programs remain. The way they say it now, what drivers pay under the gas tax is electric vehicle, eight-fifty, fuel tax paid for one thousand two hundred and fifty miles driven, eight dollars and fifty cents. Hybrid, fourteen dollars, average efficiency vehicles, thirty, and that's fifteen to twenty-five miles per gallon, thirty-six dollars over that twelve hundred and fifty miles driven. Larger vehicles, which would be pickups and SUVs, ninety dollars, low efficiency. What drivers will pay under the road charge, according to them, is thirty-two dollars flat across the whole spectrum. Sounds pretty good, but it's going to take a long time to get this program phased in.
So are they going to have some kind of, is it just going to be, they're just going to set these fees for the type of vehicle you're driving annually? Or is there going to be some kind of device put on your car that actually tracks how many miles you drive?
And that's the question. Right now, they have a pilot, remember, they came to us a couple of years ago asking if people wanted to participate. She is very, was very adamant that she wants rural counties to participate, she wants us to be part of the equation, and so they can get accountability too. She knows urban and suburban, urban and especially rural are very different. So she wants us to be part of the discussion process so we can be counted in at the end. Let's see, without getting too much in the minutia, the way this will be managed is through a third-party commercial account manager when that happens. So mileage reporting methods, our low technology options are time permit, mileage permit, and odometer charge. The high technology options are the, as to your point, Supervisor X, plug-in devices, a smartphone app, or built-in technology. So that's something we're going to be living in, in the future. I think most of us will probably still be driving in eight to ten years when they figure all this out. They've looked at the experience of other states, they're looking at a phased rollout in ten to twelve years, and as long as the zero emission vehicles are transitioned before 2035, there will not likely be long-lasting impacts to revenue. So they're trying, that's the revenue neutral portion. They had the 2017 road charge pilot, and in 2021, a four-phase demonstration, pay at the pump or charge point, use, usage-based insurance, transportation network companies, and autonomous vehicles. So they've done a lot of work on this, this whole presentation, as I said, is on the CSAC website, you might have to look for it, counties.org a little bit, but that's the way we're going. And looks like we're not going to be paying at the pump in the future if that's not the method of collection. Another interesting discussion was on emergency technology, hydrogen fuel cells. This is really interesting, they said it's already in place, a lot of vehicles are already using hydrogen, whether they're trucks or ships, or other vehicles used in the retail industry for moving goods and for goods around. Actually, the light, the charging stations are quite interesting, they say they'll look similar to what the charging stations look like now with the hydrogen technology, and for the bigger vehicles like trucks, they have heavy-duty charging stations. I didn't ask them about the Nuremberg and what they thought about that, I think, I think we have all that figured out now, so hydrogen will be just as safe as diesel and gasoline. And Nuremberg is a racetrack.
You sure about that?
And the last thing I wanted to talk-
Well, just a real quick comment, Supervisor or Mr. Chair. I've been following this issue quite a bit because I subscribe to a journal or trade journal, and every article is about green hydrogen, hydrogen production, they're going to use it to make green steel, you know, company after company is involved, even, you know, the oil companies are shipping, they're going to create hydrogen and ship it to Japan as a fuel, they're going to convert it to ammonia and then back to hydrogen once they get it there, so it's more stable as ammonia, less Hindenburg-like. The other thing that's interesting, you make hydrogen usually from electrolysis of water, and I was looking into the possibility that wastewater that's treated maybe to the secondary level could then be used in producing hydrogen. And there are a number of, you know, countries that are actually, you know, moving forward and trying to see if they can make that a reality, especially in like Australia, and that's kind of a problem for us, is getting rid of wastewater and, you know, treating to the tertiary level, tertiary plant is very expensive. If you could treat it to the secondary level, while you can't necessarily put that on crops and things like that, if you could convert it to hydrogen, then your water's gone, you've gotten rid of your water, it's just essentially an application. I know it sounds very futuristic, but hydrogen is moving very, very fast. It's going to happen, the horizon is well within a five to ten-year timeframe.
Thank you. Last couple of things that I'll cover quickly was they had a discussion on housing needs, what are counties doing for creative building of affordable housing? Were some great examples here in, let's see, Avanzado, San Isidro, Community Land Trust, where they're, how they're converting properties into, through land trusts, community land trusts, into anti-displacement strategies to help remove land from the speculative real estate market. So it's a pretty interesting discussion, they didn't spend a lot of time on it, they have examples from Mono County with the Mammoth Lakes Housing, and the one that's closer to home for us was the CEO of Housing Trust Placer, where they go in and they actually look for things like, part of our discussion today, looking at a motel that doesn't need a lot of rehab and converting that to community loan ownership through a, to solve the housing problem through a community land trust. So very good discussion. And then last, there were a number of bills that were covered. SB 35, which of 2017, created a streamlined approval process for infill projects with two or more residential units. Well, that wasn't good enough, so then they authored SB 2668, which made a series of technical changes to that SB 35. And then SB 6, Caballero, 2022, allows residential development on property zone for retail and office space without needing a rezoning, allows project applicants to invoke the Housing of California Act to limit local discretion to deny or condition approval. That's a concern, big concern for counties, but it is passing in state law. I don't think it's necessarily good to have residential into a commercial area, but that's what the state has done in their wisdom, and they are giving credits to counties, if you meet the criteria, you earn credits to get more money from the state to make these things happen. And that's a bigger discussion in here, but those are the biggest, least legislation that were discussed.
So is that really to encourage like mixed use, or?
It's to encourage housing.
Yeah.
Where another, mixed use could be one, but to me, residential should not be in a commercial area, that causes problems.
Well, if it's like retail, that's one thing, but if it's like industry, that's another thing.
Depends on the kind of commercial, I mean, that's what they're talking about with disadvantaged communities is, is they're being, houses are being built right next to industry, and that's causing issues with health.
Right, and noise and things like that.
Yeah, so you don't want to go full circle and cause problems. The last one was AB 2011 of 2022, it's a streamlined ministerial process again to qualify multifamily projects on commercial zone lands. And those ones would be required to pay prevailing wages meet specified affordable housing targets, and the goal is to unlock significant affordable and mixed income housing development potential in existing commercial zones. That could be okay sometimes, I think sometimes it's going to cause problems. So that's the extent of the meetings I went to. As well, it's normal, they had some very interesting speakers. One was a school teacher and principal who got very sick, got septic and amputee her hands and her legs. When she walked on stage, you couldn't even tell, she was wearing prosthetic hands and legs, and a very dynamic speaker about, basically, no matter what happens in your life, keep going and help people.
Adapt and overcome.
Yeah, very, very adapt, very energetic and very good speaker. I'm not sure I could do what she did, but really dynamic. So that's the reports, any questions? Any public comment, questions? Really very good conference, and I did not go into Disneyland Park there either, so. All right, with that, we'll move on to item 4C, discussion possible action relative to approval of the meeting calendar for the board and Board of Equalization for 2023 calendar.
Supervisors, it's that time again to approve next year's meeting schedule. The way things shaped out, shook out for the, the way the calendar fell is before you. For some reason, CSAC has their annual meeting set for the second week of November, I'm not sure why they did that, but which means it would conflict with our normal meeting that week. So what I've done is I've switched the meetings to the first and third meeting in November, or first and third Tuesday in November, and first and third Tuesday in December, to avoid the Christmas holiday as well. Everything works out well that, that way. We are clear of the RCRC meeting in September, as well as the Ledge Conference in April.
What about the National Association of Counties?
That also is clear, I didn't put it on here though, but I did check that one.
Thank you. I think CSAC is all dependent on their negotiations with the hotels more than anything else.
Yeah, I think they wanted to do it the week before Thanksgiving, which is the way this falls, but it also makes it interrupt our meeting, and I'm sure there are a lot of other boards that go second and fourth Tuesdays as well, so that's the way they're doing it.
Okay, so any questions on this? And I need approval of the schedule.
I'd make a motion to it.
I'm going to go with Supervisor Crew this time, and who made second?
Second.
Supervisor Brown? Any public discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I oppose. Most curious, we'll go to the minutes, November 8th, 2022.
Motion approved.
Moved and second, Supervisor Onato, Supervisor Crew on the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Most curious, we'll go to our addendum. The addendum is on the discussion of possible action relative to a recommendation from the Ameri Community Foundation regarding distribution of ARPA funds to local nonprofits. And Chuck, you want to leave this, or?
Supervisor Crew, would you like to?
Sure. This has been a, almost a year-long process, when the Community Foundation was recruited to deal with the ARPA funds for nonprofits, they had a set by the supervisors of five-hundred thousand. And before we go any farther, you all know that Kathleen Harmon is retiring at the end of the year, and John Williamson, who is our, going to be our new director, is here today, and he also has a binder with all of the applications, and he did a lot of the early with Kim, what the rules were going to be, and they decided that they would go with a lost revenue projection instead of future projects, so for the years of 20 and 21, up to a forty thousand dollar per year, and John set it up on the computer and helped vet them all to make sure that they got their applications filled out. So he did yeoman work on that, and I just wanted you to put a face with a name so you know who he is. John, raise your hand, case, there he is, he's that guy, all right. And then we set up a committee of, we wanted to have kind of a diverse group, so we, the president of our foundation is Frank Verardi, and then the supervisors wanted a supervisor on it, and it was me, and then we picked Dave Carlson, just as a member at large, very active in the community and Lions Club and in business, and his wife is real active in a lot of the philanthropic things, so we thought he would be a good, somebody from outside. So when it was all said and done, after we took requests, it was a seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand requests. So we had a committee meeting, and we decided that we needed a matrix. So as an example, we had three of the five school parent-teacher organizations, and we contacted the other two and let them know that they could apply too, but they decided not to after a couple of phone calls and emails, but they were more of a local, so we decided that they would only be a twenty percent of whatever the amount they were asking for, because there's five elementary schools, so five times twenty is a hundred percent of the fifty thousand that we had set aside for them. And then we had three that did not make the cut, because they're, they were not eligible, their funding was for projects going forward or for school property, it didn't have lost revenue. So they just, we explained that to them, and they, they're at the bottom of the community club in Sutter Creek and Willow Springs Schoolhouse. So and then in between those two were all the groups. And then we looked at, how could we get from seven-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand down to five-hundred? Well, then you dropped out the schools and redid the- Well, then you dropped out the schools and uh redid the the school and the three that were not qualified. We had about a hundred and I think it was at six fifty or six sixty. So we didn't want to penalize the smaller amount groups like under twenty thousand to take. So what we did is we came up with a matrix that we funded all the under twenty thousand at their full numbers, and then we took the forty thousand, I think there were nine of those forty thousand dollar requests, and we dropped them to thirty-five and so that got us to like five sixty. Anyway, after a a long, we ended up with a thirty-two thousand, thirty-one, four eighty-five was in that range of depending on whether they were forty and forty. So it and these were all regional, all of these groups and that group served all the county or more regional approach. So it seemed to be the fairest way to do it based on population and uh because there's needs, they're all good projects. So after that was done, we came up with where we hit the number of five hundred thousand dollars and two cents.
You're over.
Yeah, right. Wait a minute. I should have. So that was the overview of it. Any questions?
No, no questions. Supervisor Crew and I had discussions with our CAO about this before, and uh, you know, going up to seven hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars was just not acceptable. The board set that five hundred thousand dollars.
Right, and we and the Community Foundation knew that was a hard number.
Yeah, so then the question was where to how to distribute it. I think uh the methodology used was a good methodology. Uh, initially, some of the elementary schools were left out because what they were partnered with the Community Foundation, but they somehow they did not, they hadn't responded, I guess, some of them.
Right, well, the problem with the parent teacher organizations is that the leadership changes every year, and so it's hard for them. They didn't know if they had a SAM number. They didn't know what we're talking about. There were some requirements that they had to have, and they had to, some of them didn't even know if they were five oh one C threes, which you have to be. So it was a daunting task, but with John's help, uh, three of the five did apply, so.
Yeah, and I didn't think it was fair that only one.
Only one applied to start with, that's right.
Made the application, and I kind of realized the problem is you're dealing with a transient population on these parent teacher.
And they're volunteers.
So um we made the extra effort to go out and contact all five to uh ensure transparency and fairness there.
Yeah, no, I was a little a little bit chagrin that some of the historic schoolhouses didn't make it, but I do understand the reason why because there's a question right now, you know, um, oh, how how of who owns them. I mean, it's pretty it seems pretty clear that schools own at least a couple of them out of peers, and not quite sure what's happening with those historic schoolhouses. So I think some of those community groups are trying to figure out where they're going down the road, and probably be some discussions, I would think, with the school district on where they're going to be as far as extending those lease terms on those historic schoolhouses. So in the meantime, I think everything's kind of at a standstill as far as uh doing much major work on the schoolhouses.
Right.
So I'm okay, I'm okay with what's put forth.
Did I miss anything, John?
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I'd like to make a comment. Um, I believe that there's one that was left off the uh the list for technical reasons, uh, and that's Accra. Um, they're not a five oh one three C, which I guess was part of the rules, but they are a nonprofit, and they did they did take a hit, and I think that they sh- we need to find a way to make an exception for them so they can receive, you know, something.
Have other ARPA funds, and we can look at that. Um, no, they're still a big pot of money for the water districts, right?
Yeah, we still have one million dollars set aside uh for the for the water projects, water and wastewater projects.
Anything beyond that?
Uh, we're actually going back through right now and and seeing what we've allocated and what was unspent from that. I have a couple of other requests that have trickled in from MACRA and uh uh first five, things like that that um that we can talk about.
In the future.
Okay.
We still have time to spend the the remaining ARPA funds. What do we have, like another two years to spend it?
We do, yes, yeah. I, yeah.
And I would say.
We're out of that.
We are.
Okay.
Yeah.
I would say the board's intent was to look at putting that towards, you know, um, water, water infrastructure and maybe, you know, sewage infrastructure, but I don't think that's absolutely one hundred percent set in stone. Would you agree?
Uh, you can change that however you would like.
Yeah.
That's just the direction you've given.
Yeah, I think it's a good good direction to go. That's not sending that little leeway there if something needs to be taken care of. Um, that makes, you know, maybe even more sense. I'm I'm sure somebody could probably come out of that, I would.
Supervisor Crew.
I would entertain that Supervisor Axe to come out of some future funding. I'd like to see this stay intact the way it is because we set the rules, and we did turn down some people who were not five oh one C threes. One was a C four, I think, and.
Oh, I I understand that, but at the same time, this is kind of the stepchild of the county, and um uh often, uh, you know, they're scratching for funding too, so and they're not a profit-for-profit group, and they do provide a valuable service. And um based on the amounts that are listed here, I think they, you know, they'd probably be in the same ballpark.
Uh, I've been approached by the Water Agency by at least one director on uh using some of the ARPA money, but my thought was water infrastructure, and I guess they want to use it for uh for covering some of the expense they had in redoing their board re- boardroom because of COVID. Um, so anyway, we have some some considerations and discussion on uh the remaining ARPA funds.
You know, Frank, I think I kind of agree with Pat. I'd like to leave this list like it is, it's done, and there's that additional funding that will be set aside for water districts, and we could probably do something with some of that. I mean.
Yeah, I think we're only talking like, you know, a very small amount, I mean, compared to a million, so um I also think that uh we should look carefully at the the water projects too, because there might be ones that are um I think in more better alignment with some of the goals that we need to achieve in the in the future going forward.
Like increased capacity.
Potentially.
Okay. We have a any public discussion on this issue? John, you have any comments? Okay, and we need a um an action on this?
I'm moved, except uh the distribution as presented.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carries, thank you. All right, at this time, before we go into our ten-thirty list of public hearings, we'll take about a ten-minute break. The abandonment of a public utility easement and accepting an irrevocable and perpetual dedication in relation to boundary line adjustments was requested by Joe Jess and Connie Jess of the Joe Joseph John Jess Senior and Connie Jess Trust. Good morning.
Good morning.
Can you pull that mic down just a little bit?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
We have a boundary line adjustment that requires an abandonment of a ten-foot easement to accommodate a building portion area of south of the creek on parcel two, and we will be offering a dedication of a separate ten-foot easement on the new boundary line.
And this requires the adoption of several resolutions in here, correct?
Correct, thank you.
Okay. At this time, we'll open the public hearing and ask for any public comments. Are there none, board members?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second. Moved by Supervisor Onetto, seconded by Supervisor Brown. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries, and the motion be to adopt um the several resolutions of approval and acceptance.
Uh, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Moved by Supervisor Axe, seconded by Supervisor Crew. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries. All right, we'll go on to item five B, public hearing and adoption of resolutions approving the abandonment of two public utility easements and accepting an irrevocable and perpetual dedication of two easements in relation to the boundary line adjustment as requested by Jesus and Jacinta Benavides. Go ahead.
Thank you. This is a boundary line adjustment that will accommodate a line that is basically resting where there is already structures. So this adjustment of the line will accommodate the existing building and the deck that is there. In that process, the abandonment of the two ten-foot easements that are on that line would be replaced with the dedication of two ten-foot easements on the new line.
All right, any questions? Then we'll open the public hearing. Any comment on this? Be none.
Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries, and your motion.
I'd make a motion to approve the resolutions of approval and second.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries on item five C, public hearing and adoption of a resolution approval for certificate of merger for Michael and Cassie Campbell.
Thank you.
Properties are in the volcano township of Volcano. All right, go ahead.
Thank you. Our customers are requesting to merge their two properties. It will accommodate their church parcel having additional acreage and give them a little more flexibility with the parcels.
Questions for staff? We'll open the public hearing at this time. Any discussion? Any comments? I get a motion to close?
Second.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries, and your action.
I had one question, actually.
Okay.
It looks like a merger between um the Campbell properties, and it's it says a merger requested by Michael Gornett to add additional acreage to church parcel.
My apologies apologies on the staff report. That is uh supposed to be for the Campbell, Michael and Cassie.
Okay.
Uh, good catch, Supervisor Onetto. So with that, looking for a motion? Move to approve?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Item five D, consideration of Planning Commission's recommendation to approve a request for a zone change from the H Highway Commercial zoning district to the R three high-density multiple-family residential zoning district for point nine oh acres currently occupied by the El Campo Casa Resort Hotel. Chuck, good morning.
Good morning. Beatty of Plan Department. So the request is the, as you mentioned, a uh request for a zone change from uh the R three high-density multifamily district, or excuse me, from the Highway Commercial District to the R three multifamily district uh for the property that's occup- currently occupied by El Campo Casa Resort uh motel. Uh, the the purpose of that is because the applicant wants to convert those uh uh transient occupancy units to uh to apartments. That's it can't which can't be done under the current zoning. It has to have a a residential-type zoning in order to to do the conversion. It's not going to be a requirement of the zone change that you can already, but it's just not possible without the zone change. Uh, the uh Planning Commission recommended that you adopt a notice of exemption because the zone change is consistent with the general plan's classification of a regional service center for Martell, and the Planning Commission also recommended uh that the Board of Supervisors approve the the zone change subject to the findings that are in your staff report. I'd be glad to answer any questions. Applicants are here as well.
Questions?
Uh, it looks like Mr. Pham and Mr. Kirkpatrick have worked out a resolution on their easement. Is that it?
We haven't heard from Mr. Kirkpatrick since the Planning Commission's hearing, so I'll assume that's correct.
Okay.
Sounds like he was okay with it at the end, and it was kind of up to the parties to discuss it and resolve uh issues on the long long-term agreement.
That's what it looked like the minute, so.
Yeah, the um and I can't find it in my notes right away, but the adjacent property owner, was it the one across the road that had some initial concerns?
That's the one directly across Highway, that's forty-nine and eighty-eight at that location where the, we used to be a mobile home uh sales lot there.
And it just looked like he was um at least could live with it at the end?
Uh, apparently, yes.
Apparently. At least that's that was his comment, it looked like from the reading of the minutes.
Yes.
I think probably personally, probably change would probably be a good thing. People are looking for, you know, affordable long-term housing. Um, like overall, I think it's probably a pretty good idea.
Yeah, it's definitely consistent with with recent state legislation and guidelines on improving access to affordable housing. I just want to, again, point out, it's not a requirement of the zone change. It just can't happen without the zone change.
Yeah, I do agree with uh, I think it was Commissioner Bennett made a comment about basically taking a business out of business, but the conversion seems to more than uh be satisfactory to comply with what's going on with the state.
Something else I wouldn't be surprised. I mean, a lot of people are going by, you know, a lot of uh internet, electronic media, so I think smaller hotels might have a little harder time competing than with big big ones, I would think, maybe, but so if you have, if you put in um small homes, um, you know, apartments, people are gonna probably be pretty full. Makes sense.
Okay, um, we'll open this up, the public hearing. Is there any comment on this issue, on this item? Be none, board members?
Moved to close the public hearing.
Seconded to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carries now um to the staff recommendation.
I'll I'll make a motion to adopt recommendations one through three.
And moved and seconded by Supervisor Crew. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Motion carried. Yeah, it's kind of nice to have the Planning Commission vet this out, so it's not going to be a long discussion here. I mean, sometimes we, as the next item, might be a longer discussion. Yes, we'll we'll see. So with that said, we move on to our last item of the day, five E, appeal of the Planning Commission's denial of the mitigated negative declaration and entitlement applications for the following projects. One is a tentative parcel map application. Two is a use permit for battery energy storage facility. Three is a general plan amendment. Four is the zone change application. And with that, Mr. Beatty.
Um, one second. Um, yeah, I've done some work for Mr. Repini on some of that property up there, so I think at this time I'm gonna recuse myself from items five D and five E. Wait, excuse me, five five E, excuse me.
I hope it wasn't five D.
I voted for.
Five E, so with that, um. If the record shows Supervisor Onetto's recusing himself from this item. And Mr. Beatty.
Right, thank you. So the application, uh, the the joint application between the property owner uh and Apex Energy for the battery energy storage. and Apex Energy for the battery energy storage facility. The storage facility was really the crux of the application and which necessitated the general plan amendment and the zone change because the parcel that they want to use is not currently compatible for that particular use. And the tentative parcel map application was also triggered by this in order to create a special parcel just for this project. So they are all, it's all one project, but there's four separate items, or four separate applications included. The background on the project, the technical advisory committee had two meetings to discuss this, but the first one, it was actually found not complete in order for the applicant to provide information to Amador Fire Protection District concerning safety and fire suppression necessary to satisfy them for this project. After that, it was found complete and then the planning, or excuse me, the technical advisory committee in August found no technical objections to the planning commission approving a mitigated negative declaration and, as well as the use permit, and then recommending approval to the Board of Supervisors. At the planning commission meeting, however, the planning commission basically based on safety issues, found that the mitigated negative declaration was not adequate and they denied the use permit and the parcel map and they recommended that the board also deny the zone change and the general plan amendment. So the action before the board would be first, a decision on the environmental document. If you decide that it's inadequate, you can deny the projects or you can just take no action on the projects, which would, I guess, lead the applicant to believe that that environmental document could be corrected and fixed. If you find that the environmental document's adequate, then you can move forward to approve the individual projects.
Okay, can I just jump in there too, just to follow up on what Mr. Beatty indicated? Is that if you get past the so the planning commission said the environmental document was inadequate. If you were to agree with that conclusion, then theoretically at that point, you know, the projects could go back to get more work done. But if the board wanted to at that point, at least make some comments about the, how you felt about the project? Because it has those two legislative elements which are at the board's discretion, so it's really up to the board whether you want to amend the general plan or do the zone change. And, and so it might be useful for the applicant to know whether, you know, if the board felt like it was not inclined to amend the general plan, then they might not want to put the work into doing any more to the environmental document, just to come back. Just, so I would focus on that, you know, the environmental document first and then based on how you decide that, then maybe we figure out what you do next.
I asked Chief White from Amador Fire Protection District to be here today to make some clarification comments because there's a lot of information on here, but there's no specific statement from AFPD regarding the safety and safety of this project. And what happens if there is a fire? Would AFPD have the knowledge, resources to to control that fire? A lot of unknowns, at least in my mind. So Pat Chu is at a conference, so Chief White, come on up. And Chuck, I'm sure we're going to have more questions for you too.
Morning Chief, thanks for being here.
Uh, or morning Chairman Forster and members of the Board of Supervisors. Well, there's a couple of things. There are some standards that are being developed and implemented. NFPA consensus standard, which will be, I believe, become hopefully adopted here as part of code in January of twenty twenty-three. So what's occurred, you know, we're a Cal OSHA state when it comes to safety, regulation and standards, but the National Fire Protection Association is a industry best practice. They develop standards, consensus standards by committee with subject matter experts. And this is no exception. The National Fire Protection Association has partnered with Stratagen Consulting to develop curriculum to prepare and educate first responders for the risks of these facilities and also the residential units that'll be installed. So with that, we have begun awareness level training with our personnel on the risks and practices on, you know, how to contain or mitigate a thermal meltdown of these units. And with that, we believe that we'll be adopting the curriculum that's been developed. And Stratagen consultant's been working with battery manufacturers and developing what would be the, not only the best practices and strategies for firefighters to reduce risk and stay safe, but also to mitigate these. We know that, you know, it would be an associated hazmat release, but we, the county has also contracted with Sac Metro Fire to provide a, you know, type-one hazardous materials response upon request. And, you know, I think that our crews would be trained and prepared to mitigate or, you know, reduce the spread or contain any type of runoff until such response capability could arrive in the county. I do believe that our fire marshal, Pat Chu, did zoom in today. I'm not sure, Pat, if you're on the line? He was going to step out of class and zoom in to, you know, address the regulatory standards, but, you know, they have them for facilities such as this, as well as, you know, residential units that'll be installed.
He's not on the line, they're probably covering the Tesla lithium ion batteries.
Chief, keep on my line right now. I'm here.
Welcome, Pat.
Yeah. Again, I apologize for not being there. I am in a fire science class right now in the lovely city, Yuba City. But the chief is right. Currently, right now, in the fire code, there's no requirement on how to protect this. So the California Fire Code went ahead and created a new section just for this. So there is a new chapter, chapter twelve, in the California Fire Code that will be adopted in January first, twenty twenty-three, that will address these types of facilities. Also, within the building code of the two thousand twenty-three, when it comes out, they also have conditions on how to build these storage bins, if you will, because they're nothing more than a storage bin. You can't have like windows for lighting. There's no explosion-proof type venting that's permitted in this other than the roof portion. They also have added fire protection systems and monitoring the fire protection system, which is also required now, starting January first. So there is some new requirements that wasn't in the code before, that's currently will be adopted in twenty twenty-three. And to address this, so not only will they need a building permit, they will need multiple fire permits as well, in terms of spill control, fire protection, how they're going to monitor this, these storage bins. And what the chief is talking about, the thermal runaway, that is true. Once these things get hot enough and they start to oscillate to a point where there might be some ignition, and it's really hard to prevent that from stopping. Once it takes off, it will take off. The good news is, these are independent cargo bins, if you will, just for the sake of simplicity. These are storage bins. Each one of them have their own suppression system. They also are required to have some sort of spill control within the unit. So they're pretty much self-contained. The fact that we, the country, we actually had a few fires. The fire code has, is addressing this by creating a whole new chapter next year. So there is requirements. Not only do they have requirements, they also have requirements for us to inspect this yearly. So there is added protection in here. So, you know, I can't say that those added protections, it's not going to stop a fire from happening, but it will certainly contain it within these storage cabins.
The notes under environmental information from form, additional information, say that lithium ion batteries contain potentially hazardous materials and are contained with, that are completely contained within the containers. So is that enough alone to stop the fire, along with whatever suppression they have?
Well, the containment, if you see the, read the new chapter twelve in the fire code, it does talk about spill control and event of a failure, what we call a secondary containment. The good news is, there is spill control within these containment. But the not-so-good news is that that spill control containment is not intended for the whole cargo bin to spill at one time. It's usually the worst-case scenario of one unit, plus the fire suppression system. So there's your give and take in there. Hopefully, the suppression system will acknowledge the fact that there is some sort of heat release and it will discharge some sort of cleaning agent, depending on the type of suppression system they want installed within these units. Generally, it's not water. It's some sort of esoteric type of fire protection system that is monitored and which they need to get a permit for, and we will inspect these. And not only will we inspect these, we will inspect these annuallys. So there's safeguards within these storage bins, if they were to get built. But, you know, that's not a hundred percent foolproof, right?
Just to add on that, so, you know, there are regulatory standards that will be put in place here shortly to ensure that they are installed with proper safety mitigations. Now.
But that's not going to apply, any new standards would not apply to this project, correct?
Well, Pat, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I will. They haven't pulled a permit yet. And if we want, we can say, you got to pull a permit and got to comply with the twenty twenty-two fire code, which is being adopted in January first. So we can put stipulation in there. And in addition to that, if the planning commission is still uncomfortable, there's other protective measures that we can certainly add to this to ensure the fact that we're fully aware of any thermal runaway that may occur. But there's no guarantee, right? I mean, you still can have odd protection in the world and and just the mechanics of these may fail. But if they do fail, they will be built to a standard in which keeping your fingers crossed and nothing will get released outside of these units, other than maybe some toxic air, but this is outside. So, and they're contained into one cargo container.
So we feel that there are regulatory standards that will apply, that will reduce the risk and that our first responders were transitioning from awareness level to, you know, mitigation-level type training with the new NFPA curriculum that's under development. You know, Stratagen consultants even worked with battery manufacturers to get best practices on, you know, mitigation or containment of a thermal runoff. Now Metro Fire has already had experience with a an electric vehicle that wasn't responding to, you know, water application and they actually used a backhoe to create a ditch, put the vehicle in it and completely submerge it. Now, you know, as the curriculum gets developed, we will roll it out because we're constantly looking at providing our first responders with the tools and the training that they will need to be successful. And that, you know, this is not isolated to Amador County. This is, these are occurring nationally, so it's it's just another one, a new risk or threat that we need to be prepared from a first responder standpoint to reduce our responder risk and to adopt effective mitigation containment strategies. And I do believe with the contract we have with, you know, that the county of Amador has with Metro Fire's hazardous materials response unit, that, you know, we could work with environmental and and even be able to handle the cleanup portion, should we have an event.
And one of the comments, the last page of the document that was submitted, I think just yesterday or the day before, it says community engagement, providing appropriate training and education of first responders. Have you got any of that from the project proponents?
You know, Pat, have you received any of that information? Or is it just the NFPA material?
No, I have not. We actually haven't engaged in any conversation yet, to be perfectly honest, because they're still going through the planning process. So if this were to proceed, there certainly is additional conditions we could put on here, and that could be one of them. Is for potentially funding for adequate training for our first responders.
Questions? I do have one more. Under fire protection, five point eight in the document talks about, in addition to the other design features, they will have infrared flame detectors and thermal security cameras will be connected to the onsite data monitoring equipment and onsite fire alarm. But the way it is, would they be required if they're detecting any problems? The way it's stated, they would have a person respond from outside of the county. Probably Eldorado County, which would be a forty-five minutes to an hour drive, depending on traffic. Would there be a necessity for them also to call fire protection at that point to get there sooner?
Well, well.
Company, but we, we respond to whatever we get called to.
But you have to know about it, though. If they're detecting that on their equipment, if they don't call you, it doesn't do any good.
Pat, will that be a monitored system?
Yeah, the thermal, what they're talking about is an infrared that generally selects a point that once it gets hot enough, it sends an alarm. So it will send an alarm, no different than a burglary alarm to a monitoring company. So it won't call us, the monitoring company will call us, that they have a identified detection at this facility. These things are set up to where they will either, depending how we want it to set up, that infrared thermal detection, if it detects any types of heat source to a certain degree of temperature, it will discharge a, for the lack of word, a chemical that will suffocate the air in there that will, hopefully, will put out any type of heat source that's being generated from these batteries. So it's not a infrared that will call the fire department. It's a detection that will detect some sort of heat source within these batteries. And then they will call, you know, their monitoring company and the monitoring will call central station. And that's unfortunate, you know, it takes a minute or two for that to happen, right? But by that time, hopefully, the fire extinguishing system they have in there will already put out whatever is creating the heat.
That's what I'm trying to avoid, the hopefully. So we have this down on paper, that there are standards that need to be followed.
There certainly are standards. You know, I have to say hopefully, only because nothing's a hundred percent foolproof.
Would the, if it gets to that point, they go on to say that portable CO2 fire extinguishers will be placed on the outside of each enclosure. Are those going to help at all if they're relying on their own personnel who takes some time to get there?
Yeah, these, the CO2 system, any fire suppression system is, if it does its job correctly, will put out any fire way before we are even notified. I mean, that's just the way the fire department and first responder operates. We get a call from Camino and we respond. But hopefully by then, this system would have discharged and suffocated any heat source within this unit. And we're really just going there to do MAPA. In a perfect world, that's how it's set up. The key thing here, and this is the most important. In, in a perfect world, that's how it's set up. The, the key thing here, and this is the most important uh, point I'm going to make within these fire suppression system, it needs to be serviced and maintained regularly according to the manufacturer. If it says you got to come out every six months and service it, you need to come out here every six months and service it.
So if that's a, one of the most important points, is that documented with the local fire agency?
Well, it will be if they were to get a permit from us and we were to look at their, their manufacturer listing on whatever system they want to put in, in addition to the CO2 system. Uh, there, there is state code that tells you the frequency in which you need to have these inspected and serviced. Uh, and this, this is really no different than a lot of other facilities in terms of, uh, uh, having a CO2 system.
And what was mentioned, we don't anticipate a, uh, undetected, um, reaction because they'd be required to be monitored. There would be, you know, minutes of lag time as the monitoring company calls our public safety answering point, which is the sheriff's department and, you know, but based on staff and levels and everything, there's, those calls are usually transferred quickly within minutes to Camino that would dispatch our units to, you know, at, at least isolate, deny entry and, um, you know, begin mitigation type, uh, activities as safely as possible until the, uh, full response arrives.
Yeah, a- a- and keep in mind, if they're going to have an infrared detection system in addition to the CO2, they have additional redundancy in monitoring this. So, um, again, the most important thing is, is, is meeting the maintenance requirement, no difference than when you have your vehicle, you got to change the oil every three to five thousand miles and you have the big tune-up, you know, sixteen to ninety thousand miles. It's the same thing with the fire suppression system. You got to service them when they're required to be serviced. And there's any problem, they have to fix them according to the manufacturer's listing. And that's all part of the annual inspection that, uh, most fire departments do on facilities like this. We look at their paperwork and see, make sure it's all copacetic and everything that's needs to be serviced is serviced like it's supposed to. And if it's not, you know, typically they would write them a town, you got to get this thing serviced.
I think that was a big part of the planning commission, commissioners' opinions is that, yeah, if everything works right, there's no problem. But if, if you have a catastrophic event, the way I've read the minutes is it would require a total lockdown of the whole community because of the, the danger.
That's what happened in Moss Landing. Okay, there, if you Google this, these fires have occurred. I don't know how frequent they are, but they had to do a shelter in place. Also, everything for combustion is already there, um, in the battery. So I don't even know if a CO2 or any suppression system could put the fire out. It would have to just burn. Um, maybe I'm wrong, but, uh, there's the oxidant and the reductant right there. So, um, that's, that's the concern is that, uh, it, they sheltered in place because of, I guess, toxic fumes or whatever that were coming out of the roof. And I think it burned, you know, eight, twelve hours. So, um, it's not, it's, it's not that simple. A F P D is going to roll up and put it out.
No, in fact, you know, if we did any application of water, it really wouldn't be to extinguish anything but to slow or contel- contain the spread until we could get a more adequate response or definitive plan on how to deal with it. But, um, you know, that's why we are, at this point, um, we've begun awareness level training with our crews based on the, uh, potential risk and the, uh, you know, we will be, as, um, curriculum is developed, um, providing the appropriate, uh, operational level of response training to our personnel. But, you know, whereas a lot of this curriculum is still under development.
Um, I would like to clarify something, um, supervisor, supervisor act said, um, Moss Landing, the two incidences that have happened there, um, they were not an actual fire, but a, a thermal runaway where they just melted everything and, and created smoke, but it did not physically catch fire. The Arizona-
That, that's effectively a, a combustion reaction at that point.
It's, uh, yeah, but, you know, you know, unlike the Arizona fire and then the Australian fire.
Are you trying to say that that's not a bad thing?
No, there are bad things.
Okay.
But I'm just, you know, a little bit of a difference.
Are you saying that it has to have flames or, or what?
The, you know, you have a thermal runaway. It's like you have a, a car that has a, that's lost its thermostat. Yeah, it, it's a bad thing, but it doesn't-
It's not like it lost its thermostat. It's reacting violently and un- uncontrollably. That's what's happening.
Yeah, w- water, a typical, you know, um, suppressing agent just doesn't, um, doesn't interrupt the, uh, chemical reaction that's ongoing with this. So that is the, a challenge of it for sure.
The one, uh, claim that's been made here is it'll, this will be a substitute to, to keep power running during the, um, PG&E power shut-off events, um, because it would keep putting power into the, into the grid. But I, I think once the power's shut off, PG&E just disconnects everything, right?
That's a question for probably the, uh, the company it belongs to.
Was that discussed? I believe it was brought up at the, at the discussion, planning commission.
It was generally discussed at the planning commission meeting with the, it's, you, you can't energize lines that have been turned off by, by PG&E regardless where the source is.
Right. So I, I think that claim is not exactly correct. Any other questions? All right, at this time then we'll open the public hearing or give a chance for the project proponent if they want to come up and make comments, but we'll open the public hearing. Good morning.
I'm Brian Rahman. I'm here to, um, speak to this project. Couple of things I'd like to comment on. Um, first, the, the Moss Landing and the Australian fires are substantially different than, than the, or those facilities. They're magnitude larger. Moss Landing is eighty times larger than this. It's in a warehouse with a lot of batteries. We're talking about small one megawatt, so four hundred times smaller in each container. Um, in terms of, um, monitoring, I heard that was a, a comment. So we have twenty-four by seven monitoring occurs in Folsom. We have a backup center in El Centro, California that is there, there for our backup center in case something was to happen in Folsom. So we do have twenty-four, four-seven monitoring of not only the, the output of the battery, the temperature and, um, and obviously we would meet all the current fire codes that are in place by the time we pull our permits. Um, third thing that I heard from the su- uh, the, the commissioners was aesthetics. And we do have a slide on aesthetics to try to help, help with that. Um, we believe that there's one section in the bend of the road where the facility is actually visible. The rest of it is, um, really you don't see it. It's kind of up on a hill. The road's down below.
Uh, the one, one comment you just brought up, you'll meet all current fire codes. As was just stated, there are new standards that are being adopted right now. So that, I think that's the expectation, my expectation. I hope it's the rest of the board too, that, because this is an emerging technology and, uh, sometimes the rules and regulations lag a little bit. So I would, I would like you to comply with whatever, as Mr., uh, Pat Chu said, our inspector, that, um, I'd like you to comply with anything that's going to be adopted on this, uh, for 2022.
Absolutely. Um, the, the electric industry has been changing rapidly, um, over the past ten years really. And we see these different requirements come in. Batteries are brand new, especially the lithium ion and the way they're being deployed in cars, you know, on people's homes. Um, and, and we're going to see more and more of these, 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 I'll call them utility scale batteries, um, in the area. Absolutely, we would expect to meet all the fire standard codes and even implement new fire standard codes that are required. We operate several of these batteries around the state now. We're have several in development and in all cases, we, we intend to meet the fire code. Well, and last thing we want is a facility that burns up, then we've lost everything. There was one other comment that I'm forgetting what it was now. We do have, um, our-
The aesthetics was one. Did you have, in this, uh, I guess, in what you just turned in, you, you had some of the, um, pictures.
I think it's two slides.
What it would look like. Right at the start.
Generally, that, that's where the site is. It's at Ridge Road and Highway eighty-eight behind the Dollar Tree there. We only take up a small section of that parcel. These are some renderings that we've done to kind of give you an idea of what it looks like. Um, in talking with our manufacturer, there, there is a good chance we can reduce that from seven containers to six based on density of, of the batteries. Um, the fire safety, we do have our manufacturer representative on the phone and, and, um, Kevin here with me to, uh, answer any specific fire related questions that you might still have, um, concerning the project. Um, Kevin has extensive experience around, around the state with fire projects or with battery projects.
Uh, Stella, a concern in my mind that your individual monitoring this is close to an hour away, about forty, forty-five minutes to an hour. Um, so as, uh, Chief White and Inspector Chu said, the expectation I think would be if, if the alarms go off for our local fire department to be notified. Is that, um, what actually occurs?
That, that's what actually would occur. We would, at the same time we notify the department, we, we would dispatch our people to get here to, to, you know, help where, where possible. Um, but we would be relying on the fire department if we had a big fire. And, and in terms of our commitment to the community, um, I know it's, it's a little premature, but we would absolutely be, um, very interested in helping the community with preparing for lithium ion batteries in your area. Um, to the, to the point to the, the fire marshal and the captain, um, providing, you know, support for training and so forth.
My question on aesthetics, Supervisor Brown, um, you know, as you talk about Moss Landing having their containers sitting inside a building.
They're not even in containers in the building. It's a big warehouse.
Right, but, you know, I've seen pictures, but it's, you know, to a point. Um, is there any way of doing something like that in this, you know, situation, um, for aesthetics? You know, it's one of the biggest complaints that people were giving me was aesthetics. And then also possibly containing anything that does, you know, happen, containing it inside as much as, as possible inside of a secondary building.
Sure. I, I don't think putting it in a, in a warehouse or a building type structure would probably work for the project, um, due to economics. Um, but if we need, you know, berms on the ground, if we need additional containment, um, beefing up within the container, those are things that we could look at with our manufacturer.
Because that was one of, you know, the, the biggest, you know, a lot of the fears that everybody has up there is of course fire. Um, and as far as, and then there's also a stream right across the street, you know, Highway eighty-eight. And it's headwaters to the water, you know, stuff coming down here. And so they're afraid of anything coming off of that. If the fire department is actually having to put out the fire, you know, what contaminants are now getting into that stream?
Well, um, I mean, in terms of containment, any, anything that the, the county requires, uh, our department requires, we'd be more than happy to put in retention basins, you know, uh, wh- whatever's needed.
Couple of things on the, on the power that's generated, that's going to go wherever the demand is. So, uh, it may not end up in Amador County ever.
Well, this battery happens to sit on the distribution system that serves Pine Grove area, the casino up the street. In the event of power shut-offs, what the utility is typically doing is shutting off the higher voltage lines that feed that main substation there. Those are the ones that are long winding through the woods to get up to the community. PG&E is actively pursuing, um, several programs right now in their, their microgrid pilot program to look for communities where they do have a high likelihood of doing powers, public safety power shut-offs. And in those cases, they're using facilities like this battery. Um, that you can't, in some cases, you could put a diesel generator. Um, and they've done that in, in, in recent years actually. Um, but the battery in conjunction with PG&E, because that's absolutely true, you can't just turn the battery on if they've shut down the transmission. But in coordination with PG&E to keep city centers hot, like downtown of Jackson, for example, or the, um, the facilities in and around Pine Grove that that, that substation feeds, those could remain in service. But it would be coordinated with the, with the utility, of course.
Yeah, examining where our, uh, courts are right now because they have a, a large diesel system that the state will not allow them to use right now. So they can no longer even turn it on because they are the court system for the state. What about the, uh, the, one complaint I've heard too is, um, just aesthetically, the, the wrap wire on top of the fencing, is that mostly not visible?
You know, from our aesthetics report that, um, E Corp did for us, which I, I hopefully you have, um, we think as, again, there's one section of the road in the turn by the right, where basically the turn right at Ridge Road, where you can see the facility up on the, um, up on the hill. You know, we, I think we need the, the extra security of razor wire on the top to keep people out. Um, it is a, you know, something that someone could, could want to get into like any other, any other facility. We could do things to beautify the fence, um, put in slats, um, cover it with, uh, I've seen, uh, the green mesh covering the, the cyclone fences to make it a little prettier.
You have, um, a lot of electronics in there. Couldn't you put in a camera system that could be monitored by your, your people with a SCADA system that is, uh, not accessible by thieves? Because we have had camera systems that were actually stolen or taken down by the thieves.
Yeah, we would absolutely have a SCADA system. Um, it, it'd be, we have to have something here at the facility. It'd be in a, in a, in a control room there that I think we show on the, on the picture or in the very front end of one of the cabinets. Um, we, we have to have that facility here so it can talk to Folsom.
Sir, is it, uh, I see this as a standalone project. Is there any expandability building into this? Like five years from now might have phase two and-
Not, not typically in these projects. We come in, we do them once, we size them for the local distribution system for the wired, the specific circuit that we're connecting to, to avoid a lot of, um, unnecessary upgrades to the PG&E system.
As far as, um, any training, I think that comment was made in your document, um, appropriate training, education of first responders. So you, you'll work, once the permitting and process goes through, you'll work with our first responders on, uh, making that happen.
Absolutely. I would assume that would be part of our, our permitting work with the fire department. And if they need equipment, if they need additional training that they're not already going through, we'd, uh, we'd be more than willing to help with that. We've even gone so far as to talk to some of the local high schools that have vocational programs. We, um, a, a general rule of thumb for, for Apex and Z Global's, when we go into a community, we like to find value for the community in something like this. So we've spoken to a couple of the vocational programs where you've got local skilled young, young people that would like to get into this industry. They may not be heading off to a four-year university, but there's outstanding vocational programs that would enable them to, uh, support projects like this within the county. And, and, and that's just, just, just to someone like me or others that, um, in, in my, in our company would go and, and give presentations to these kids, either at the high school or the junior college level to highlight the opportunities.
That's up to the schools to initiate that.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Uh, who, whose district is this?
Uh, it's District Four.
Are you, um, what's your feeling on this project?
Um, well, I think there are the concerns about, uh, fire and I think it is an emerging technology. But I think what's more important is that this area is zoned for really housing. And we really probably need, well, high density housing. And I think that would be ideal for the area. Um, you know, the zone change is to turn it to town center because it allows more industrial types of, of, um, you know, projects. But the idea of town center to me means a place of commerce, a place where people live, not really an industrial place. And yeah, okay, Ace's Waste is there, but Ace's Waste really takes on, you know, fulfills a very important role in the community. Um, there's also a, an electronic or, um, a substation, PG&E and substation. But again, as part of the power grid, people need that. Um, I'm not really seeing that this is necessary. I like the project. I like the idea. I think we should have this, but in an industrial area where it's appropriately zoned for that rather than kind of bending the rules. I mean, we have a general- than kind of bending the rules. I mean, we have a general plan. You know, this is where you do this, and over here is where you do that. And the developers should know that. The aesthetics, I think, is you're coming down the hill from the housing above there. They may not, you know, really like that. But I, again, I think the, that would be a good place, I think, for some apartments or tiny homes or something. We're allowing that under building code. You know, Mr. Rapini, that's what he does. So, I think there's also, there's plenty of places in Martel for something like this, other parts of the county. So, that's my take on it. You know, that's where it's appropriately zoned for something like that. And I think, you know, why do we have a general plan if we don't follow it?
Yeah. That would be a question. Why, what was the selection of this property over areas that are considered more commercial-industrial?
The significant driver for this one is the proximity of the PG&E substation and the distribution circuit that runs along the road there. Those are two key factors that we look at in citing a battery anywhere, the proximity of the distribution system. We don't want this thing way down at the end or very remote. It requires new construction of transmission or distribution lines. This fits nicely in with the existing facilities. No upgrades really required to the PG&E system.
So, why Pine Grove and not where, you know, down by Jackson, Sutter Creek?
Pine Grove, places like Camino, we've targeted specifically for public power safety shut-off concerns. That, and PG&E is, and as I mentioned before, they're working with some pilot programs in, I believe they're in Lake County now, and in Yew County, where they're doing exactly like this. They're putting in a large battery, sometimes paired with a diesel generator. Diesel generator can't pick up the load all at once. Battery is much more efficient at doing that in chunks. And so, that's really a primary driver, to find those areas, one that have a need, or, you know, in certain instances where the power's shut off, and the close proximity to the distribution facilities.
Well, you know, it would have been good to hear from PG&E that they were going to utilize this battery pack and keep the power on.
Keeping the battery on would have to be in close coordination with PG&E. And like you say, they would have to decide this is an area they want to do it in. It is obviously the first step in enabling a microgrid to have the resources there.
But no one is from, hear from PG&E to say that they would do that. Is there?
Nope, that's true.
Okay.
I mean, that's the question. Would PG&E commit to that?
Yeah. I don't know. We'd have to ask them. And that would give more purpose to this being there. Because right now, I don't necessarily see the purpose, other than you're saving power when it's cheaper, and then putting it back in the grid. And I'm all for that, you know. I'm all for, you know, trying to make things as green as possible. But, you know, we're giving up something in return for that. And I, you know, we're being hit by the state to create more affordable housing and other things like that. And, you know, that's kind of what that's zoned for. So...
Well, just part of that property is zoned for. The other half is commercial, of the two parcels that we're talking about.
Well, it's owned, I believe, as residential.
One of them is residential, and one of them's commercial, correct? It's not heavy commercial.
That parcel that's there now is split zone. So, the portion closest to Dollar General is commercial. The remainder of it, going further west, back towards Jackson, is residential.
Right.
And Chuck, just to be fair to everybody, the General Plan Advisory Committee, when they met, they had ten meetings, and they never mentioned electric vehicles or charging stations. That wasn't even part of the things we talked about in those days.
And that's a good point, because if it were a, if PG&E wanted to do this, that's a publicly regulated utility. Public utilities can have the latitude and the zoning code to put these wherever they want to, as long as they get a use permit. Wouldn't involve a zone change or a general plan amendment. Nobody thought about this when they were going through the, either the zoning code in the eighties or the general plan in two thousand, right. These things weren't thought about in the code.
And one of the things that are becoming, these are becoming a benefit, is because California wants to bring peaker plants offline, you know, the fossil field-powered peaker plants. And so, that's part of the reasoning behind all these, you know, from moss landing to, you know, the, what is it? They're running two hundred, two thousand five hundred kilowatts in the state of California right now?
Yep. Yeah, exactly. Over the next five to ten years, we expect probably three to five gigawatts of batteries across the state. There'll be small ones like this, and there'll be larger ones.
Are they running these batteries in, like, in the middle of cities, as long with, you know, not just out in the rural areas?
Yeah. We, so there's, I think the best middle-of-the-city example I have is in Santa Paula in Southern California. We've got a sixty-megawatt project there, basically a warehouse. And that's right, right in town. There's communities right next to it, like residential communities.
Yeah. Because that was one of the things, you know, as I tried to educate myself over the weekend, is the off-gassing, you know, one a failure, which is one in a million is a failure rate for these type of batteries. It is the off-gassing, and then the chemical discharge of the chemicals in those cabinets, you know, as they, you know, the fire department opens, finally opens the door, and it releases. So, of course, Highway eighty-eight, sitting right next door, you know, that's a real thought that we have to be careful of.
Do you think that PG&E, if they were asked to comment on this, would attend a hearing and do that?
Knowing the pressure that PG&E is under today, and with the work they're doing to underground across the state, I seriously doubt that.
But, you know, as this normally works, you don't, this system would normally work, I call it the Casio, but it's not the proper term.
No, that is, it's the CISO, yeah. Absolutely. It would run through the ISO. It would be a wholesale distribution asset.
So, it's not really even PG&E's, yes or no, the way this runs? Do you guys deal directly with the ISO to when to, you know, take power, when to give power?
Yeah. There's two ways it could function, the way you just described there, under pure merchant arbitrage. Alternatively, one of the big IOUs or community choice aggregators purchased the battery for their resource adequacy purposes, capacity purposes. And so the battery happens to have a four-hour duration, and that's what's required to provide resource adequacy, which is a requirement for the utilities. It's essentially to show that they have one hundred and fifty percent of their peak demand under contract if something was to happen. So, they have a margin above what they think it's going to be, so we can keep the lights on across the state.
All right. Any further questions? No, we may have questions for you additionally. But I'm going to take public comment at this time. Is there any public comments? And Commissioner Bennett?
Mark Bennett, in the name of a proper full disclosure, you all know I'm on the planning commission, and I also voted against this project on the commission.
As well as the other three did that were present?
Yes. Yeah. It was four zero. Some of the things that I wanted to mention have been mentioned. We have industrial zoning in an adjacent-to-single-family-home area, which seems pointless. It's the, why have zoning if we're going to do that? So, I see it as two problems. One is approving this, and the other is approving it now. And I'm, you know, delighted to hear that our fire departments are preparing for lithium-ion battery fires. And as you all know, Amador Transit's getting electric buses, the school system's getting electric buses, AWA is under pressure to get electric vehicles, and the charging stations were just made easier by supervisory action. We do not, at present, have the capability to fight lithium-ion battery fires, and I cannot imagine this being approved until we have that capability. The project plans, according to the documents to the planning department, it will take them six months to build this. I don't think we will be ready to fight lithium-ion battery fires in six months. So, perhaps they should, it's, my recommendation is to deny it, and then perhaps allow them to resubmit when we are confident in this county fighting lithium-ion battery fires. I would also like to add, based on everything I've read and a bit of conjecture, that this technology is going to be outmoded soon and vastly improved with better energy storage. And this project is planned for a thirty-year lifespan. I don't think that the technology will last that long. And this is related to the discussion that was here earlier about hydrogen and hydrogen vehicles, which may become the ascendant technology. So, again, my feeling is to not approve it at present until we were better able to fight lithium-ion battery fires. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Good morning.
Good morning, Board. My name is Stacy Munderlin. I'm planning commissioner for District Four, where the project's slated to be. And I think you've done a good job this morning of going through our main concerns that we presented at the planning commission for their initial proposal. I am seeing the new renderings for the first time this morning of the additional aesthetic concerns. I don't think that they go far enough. When, a few things about location. It is very close to residential area that we've been working on developing, and the applicant has been working on developing since I moved here sixteen years ago. You would see this through that entire development, also coming down Ridge Road as you approach Pine Grove and heading west on eighty-eight. So, it's a very visible project. As we were just talking about, I don't believe that our general plan was equipped to contemplate a project like this. We didn't have that technology. There weren't projects coming down the road like this. We're seeing across the United States, counties, municipalities of all sizes, taking pause on approving projects of similar size, five megawatts, and larger-sized. If we could go back to the slide that was here when I first got in about current Apex energy projects. The five-megawatt project, I think, is just below the threshold of being a utility-sized scale project, which would require additional contracting with the power company for how the energy is taken off and put back. So, we're just below that. So, it is a large project. It is not a microgrid, it's not a microgrid application, nor has there been any discussion that I've seen before today about Pine Grove being any kind of pilot area for a microgrid application. Even in a microgrid application, I think a five-megawatt project would supply under a hundred homes for about four hours. So, it's not something that we would be relying on for very long if it was to come to fruition in our area. Now, it was the one about the... This one. So, the other projects, and I did have concerns about trusting Apex Energy Solutions to monitoring and being able to appropriately respond to problems and hazards with the project. I do see that they have these large projects, but these are utility-scale projects, the five-hundred-and-thirty megawatts, twenty megawatts, sixty megawatts. These are utility-sized projects that do fall under different regulations, other than a five-megawatt project. Also, with the one in Yuba County, that's in an agricultural area. It's actually taken away space from a private agricultural landowner, and it is a similar-sized project. But that is in conjunction with a community utility provider. I did not find current projects in El Dorado County. I didn't search too deep. I didn't make any calls, but looked through their planning commission documents and didn't see any pending. I will reiterate what my fellow commissioner, Mark Bennett, stated. I don't think this is the right time for this project. I also don't think it's the right place for the project. We are just completing our housing element. It has not been approved for the county. I don't think we're in a position to be removing residential land allotment. As I know, obviously, energy, a really big problem and concern for our state, but also housing. And we are going to need to wrestle with both of those. But why change zoning now from residential to an industrial use, when we're still working on the residential component of our general plan and the housing element, making that current? If we are to approve the project, I was encouraged to hear that Apex is willing to offer training, equipment for our fire protection services. As I stated at the meeting, originally the planning commission meeting in October, I do believe that this project places an undue burden on our Amador Fire Protection Services, other than in the six-month period of construction that will take place. They said that that may create some temporary jobs in the county. But otherwise, I don't see one job created from this project locally. But adding additional burden for our fire protection services. I think that the community members living close, the town center designation is also supposed to be a place where tourism is encouraged, where tourism takes place. And that would be putting that pool of people at risk also. I would be interested in finding, you know, other ways to mitigate the fire hazard, in addition to the additional training and equipment, but also a more adequate hazard response plan beforehand. With the, with this layout of the seven storage containers, we're looking at about just under eighty feet from Highway eighty-eight. So, if we were to shelter in place, we would most likely have to cut off access of Highway eighty-eight, our main thoroughfare through Pine Grove. And it is also close to Ridge Road. So, if something were to happen and both thoroughfares were cut off ingress and egress, Pine Grove would be in a pretty dire situation. I know that these are big ifs, but I think that when we're planning something that has a possibility even, and I don't believe it's one in a million, I hadn't read that, and you did one in a million.
It's between one in a million and one in ten million, between the different types of batteries.
Mm-hmm. I just don't think that we should be willing to sweep that under the rug, that there is the possibility for a catastrophic failure.
Part of the thing I also get a kick out of, these have started more fires... Part of the thing I also get a kick out of, these have prevent, started more fires than these power battery systems. Because people put them on their nightstands, plug them in, and they have a failure because you've dropped them or something like that, where the phones had a, had a failure, and it's actually caught houses on fire. That was kind of an interesting, you know, side note that I found out of doing all this.
Different kind of fire. And the thermal runaway is a severe.
Thermal runaway. This is what it, you know, this phone will do a thermal runaway.
Mm-hmm.
So it does the same exact thing. Smaller scale, but of course, where it's sitting on that thermal runaway is, is the failure. That's kind of a...
I'm not familiar with what the battery component is in the iPhone, but I have been looking up the lithium ion battery, and the thermal runaway is a major concern of mine. And the roof venting, being the main place where the heat is escaping with the canopy that surrounds this project site, didn't seem like a good match for me. Also, the six-inch gap on the bottom of the fencing to allow wildlife access, I thought that seemed problematic also. And one other point that I made that I'd like to reiterate during the commission meeting was that on the ingress into the project is our public bus stop there. So if something were to happen, then we wouldn't have access to that bus stop, and it could be problematic during the six months of construction.
That's another big if.
Lots of ifs, right? In every project.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments.
Thank you.
Any other comments? I'm going to ask, before you come up again, Chief White, can you come up? And I don't know if our Marshall Chu is on, I don't expect him to have stayed on, but comments Mr. Bennett made on your, this project will take six months to construct if it's approved, and your ability to be ready for these types of fires in that period.
Well, it's, it depends on the curriculum development, but, you know, we'll make it a priority to train our crews, especially with the facility being built. You know, we just have a, a training calendar that, you know, is pretty full, but, you know, with a new facility being built, we would make it a priority that our crews are trained on the, how to respond. You know, they have the awareness to be safe and, you know, have whatever training or tools we can give them to at least contain, if not mitigate, an incident.
And you, you have not gone through the training yet. Do you know what kind of equipment, is this a different kind of equipment that's required to suppress fires if they occur in this facility?
Well, so we've begun awareness level training of the associated risks. But as far as, you know, operationally, how we will respond to go from containment to mitigation, no, I don't, you know, like I said, the National Fire Protection Association, which, you know, even though we're Cal OSHA State, we, NFPA represents industry best practices, and they have partnered with Strategin Consulting to work on the curriculum development, which includes working directly with the battery manufacturers and, you know, identifying the safest and best practices for containment and mitigation. At this point, you know, I, I do not always mention, MetroFire ran into a difficult situation where they were, could not really extinguish a Tesla that was melting down with a, you know, a thermal reaction. So, you know, they were resourceful enough to have a backhoe nearby that they could dig a hole, move the car into and submerge it. And maybe, you know, that there has to be some type of, you know, dirt, sand, whatever to at least contain this, but I don't have that curriculum today.
You're, you're not saying AFD would have purchased a backhoe then, right? I hope not.
Well, hopefully, somebody will purchase that for us. We, I got people that would gladly use it.
Okay. Thank you. Sir, come on up. Do we have anybody on Zoom, Jennifer? Nope?
Comment on two items there. Number one, on the micro grid comments, I certainly don't want to oversell that. A battery on the distribution system is simply a first step towards enabling a micro grid. I know this from prior work with PG&E and other areas where they're setting up grids, micro grids, either batteries or generators to the distribution system. This project wouldn't even, assuming we got an approval today, would not even attempt to pull our permit probably till the middle of '24 with a commercial operation date of end of 2024 or early Q1 2025, which hopefully that would be enough time to address fire training.
The, one comment that was made about technology advancing very quickly, and I'm sure you're aware of it, what happens if in two years, you build this and two years later, technology is way outpacing this, would you anticipate coming back and making changes to this project? Or it would stand alone as it is for foreseeable time?
I think it would, it would remain for its life. These projects are built for a certain duration, and then it would go away. There's always emerging technologies. We've seen a lot of it in the utility industry in the last 15 years, from compressed air storage to lithium ion batteries, advancements in wind technology. Where the utility is going through a tremendous growth and change right now, and we see that everywhere. Certainly there, I would expect, just as an engineer, that we're going to see new advancements in technology that will better us in the future. When that's going to happen? I don't know. Right now, we see a tremendous, tremendous push across the whole state to put in batteries, and lithium ion is that technology today. And I really don't see that changing in, in the next 10 to 15 years, I mean, five to 10 years. It takes a while for these technologies to mature, become effective in the utility, and then to get the utility to, to, you know, allow these things on their system. They don't want unproven equipment. And these things only get sold or only get built if there's a utility-type off-taker to, to, to take the power, whether it's an investor-owned utility like PG&E, or it's a community choice aggregator, or other large wholesale customer. They're not going to commit to a project that is unsure or very speculative. So they're conservative in nature, I guess, is my point.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? I need a motion to close public hearing.
We'll move. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries four, zero, one, and discussion by the board.
Well, I, I don't see the justification, you know. I think it was based on PSPS. There's no guarantee that PG&E is going to do anything with it. There is the aesthetic issues. There's no economic benefit. And we're taking land that could be for housing, particularly high-density housing, and putting this on it. I understand it has to be close to a substation. And if the, if the technology was proven and tested and there was a provider that wanted to, to create a micro grid in the area, then I think that that would be a benefit to the My guess is, is that these fires aren't real common. My cell phone never melted down on me, but it is a concern that this can happen. So I would, and the project proponent doesn't want to build it for another two years. I'd say maybe come back in two years and we'll talk.
I, I kind of like the project, but I'm not really that enthused by the location where it is. And I somewhat agree with Supervisor Axon, we put the general plan together for a reason, and to come back and do a general plan amendment and, and then zone changes to make this fit the location, not sure is the best way to proceed.
And I agree with you. I, I wish this was sitting down on the old SPI facility below Lowe's. I think that would be, you know, the better, the better place for this and for all situations that happen.
Well, I think Martel would be a really good place for one, and maybe even a bigger one, and allow us to, to see it in action and build community support for it, you know. If it was a local backup source that provided energy, you know, even, even, you know, 100 houses maybe, but it could keep the fire station that was going in there, the lights on there. I know we need to keep public safety going, the water district, but I, I'm just concerned that it just seems like an odd location to me. And the justification is, we're targeting these places for the micro grid, but then there's no connection that PG&E is here saying, yeah, we need this.
Well, if, if you look on the Casio website, during the summertime, one of the biggest things, you know, that was learning over the weekend, was that's the biggest use for these things, is when they're asking for peak power, you know, at the end of the day. Because during the middle of the day, at noon, is actually when the power's the cheapest because of solar, is so much in there. So these are, can be accepting per se the solar section of power. But going with all this, I kind of agree, it's not in the best place. I wish, you know, aesthetics is one of the big points for me. I, you know, it's not a, you know, we still need businesses up there, but also that property, you know, I've been here for over 17 years, and that property's been on sale for 17 years. So that's, you know, this is also an asset for the county as, you know, for, you know, not trying to be a money guy, but, you know, property taxes. So that's, you know, that's another part of the equation.
That would add a, somewhat of an improvement to the, the property, so that would be the, the one net benefit.
Yeah. So it's, it's kind of a...
It is a big benefit.
I'm looking at the pros and cons, but wherever you put this, it's going to be an aesthetic issue of if you put it in...
Right.
I mean, we're talking Ampine now. Ampine's not going to rebuild, and they're talking about looking at housing.
I, I think we should put, in Ampine, we should, that's where we should put a lot of green energy types of businesses or infrastructure, biomass, potentially hydrogen, you know, maybe a hydrogen refueling station there, and then this kind of stuff. Those are the things we should be concerned, that's industrial, that's industrial land, and we shouldn't be converting that to housing.
But the state is talking about mixing that, as our previous agenda items discussion showed.
Yeah, well, I could see commercial, you know, grocery stores, supermarkets, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, but the problem with that, I mean, Chairman, is they want to sit there and say, yeah, we need to have combined things, and then they turn around and out of the, side of the mouth, they say, why is industrial in disadvantaged neighborhoods? So it kind of like slaps you one way and then slaps you the other way.
Supervisor Crew.
As for the general plan argument, the, that's just a snap, you're taking a guess of what's going to happen in the next 30 years, and the electric charging stations, no, that's... I don't, changing the general plan doesn't bother me any, and I've been watching that property for 17 years or whatever. I've never seen one survey stake go, it's not like we're taking up residential ground that there's high demand for. However, the fire issue probably bothers me much more than the general plan argument, that the training for it and just the technology, and I thought Commissioner Bennett made some very sound arguments. And those problems would still go to Martel, so I'm not so sure that Martel's, you know, the fire suppression's going to be the same problem in Martel as it is in Pine Grove.
Well, it is an industrial area, so a lot of that property, you can keep it far enough away. Also, it is land that's owned for housing that's still close to, that's served by water and wastewater capacity, although, you know, how mu...
Is it available?
How much is available? I don't know.
Okay.
Okay. I don't know. But if you're going to have a higher density of housing, you're probably going to have to have that as opposed to septic.
This is a tough decision, but wherever you put a facility like this, you're going to have objections. You say, okay, put it in the Martel area, but the Martel area, housing is already being talked about in that area. So you're talking about a possible change in the...
Yeah, I, I don't think that's a, if someone, someone else is talking about housing, I don't think that's a good, I don't, I don't like that idea.
With what we just talked about on state legislation today, the state's going to force you to have mixed housing, mixed development.
Okay. Yeah, we have a place for, for housing up there right now.
And it could be right next to industrial with the way the state goes. They want you to have, allow commercial, maybe even industrial to have housing right next to it. Kind of, it doesn't make sense with...
I could see mixed use, like the supermarket and apartments, you know, together, or, or retail businesses with the, with the living quarters up above. I think that's what they're trying to encourage. Not a, you know, heavy industry.
Well, I think we've talked this out. Is there any further discussion?
Nope.
Then I'm ready for a motion.
Well, if I make a motion to, not to deny the general plan change and the zoning change, or do I have to deny everything?
Do we have to act on the environmental document first?
It, the way it's all tied together is a little, I mean, if you're prepared to act on the environmental document, you know, and uphold the planning commission's decision, then you can do that. I think that stops the project. And, I mean, I think I've heard at least three of you say you weren't inclined to change the general plan there. I mean, that's sort of a message to, to the applicant. It's just odd to, if you, if you, if you, if you deny, if you say there's no adequate environmental document, you probably aren't going to reach the substantive decisions. Just trying to prevent the applicant from expending more time and, and resources on a project where the board may be disinclined to change the general plan in that, in that area. So you could do it that way, or you could do what the planning commission did, which was deny them all.
Well, if I made a motion to uphold everything the planning commission did, is that sufficient?
If you see the...
Or do I have to enumerate everything?
Under, under G in your staff report, if the board finds a proposed mitigated negative declaration inadequate, you should deny the appeal and deny the, I wouldn't, yeah, you, you could do that, what, what the staff report says. I would say that the, the denial on the project, though, probably wouldn't be, like, binding forever, so, but...
I mean, I'm not going to support denying everything because I'm not, that's not what I'm voting on. I'm voting on more or less just the land use issue and the general plan amendment. The environmental document, to me, may be adequate.
So, so then you could, you, so if, well, if, if that was the way the board wanted to go, then you would grant the appeal with respect to the environmental document, and then you would deny the general plan amendment?
And that's not going to help them in any future project because they'd have to get a new environmental approval for wherever they would locate in the future, correct?
Yeah. I mean, this project can't go forward without the general plan amendment and the zone change.
Does that help you at all, Supervisor Axon?
Okay. Can I just make a motion to deny the general plan change and the zone change? Can I just make a motion to deny the general plan change and the zone change?
All right. Is there a second?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there a second?
We're going to pass the gavel to the vice chair and second the motion.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Aye.
Was that three to one?
Three to one.
Three to one. Motion carries three to one, so project application is denied as far as the general plan amendment and the zone change. Correct, counsel?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. With that, that's all the business come forth today, so our meeting is adjourned.